All right, call the meeting to order at six thirty-one. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Trustee Berman is absent. Trustee Luther.
Here.
Trustee McNeil.
Here.
Trustee Pierce.
Present.
Trustee Masonic.
Here.
Trustee Peterson.
Here.
Mayor Gartner.
Present. We have one trustee attending remotely on Zoom. First item is the mayoral report. A couple holidays coming up or recognitions. Monday is Martin Luther King Day, which we'll discuss during the meeting. It is also law enforcement appreciation day week, which is yesterday, I believe was the day. And then just a quick status on Grim Road. You will see in our agenda tonight, we have one agreement out of four for approval today so that we can get the easement accesses for Grim Road. We have been having discussions with the other three stakeholders. One of them we talked to today, which was the owners of the tractor supply building. So I anticipate in the next two to four weeks, we'll have an agreement of the board to vote on. We also had appraisal done for a portion of property related to body craft, so that will be coming down the pipeline. And then there's been a little more challenging negotiation with Cunis Ford, which I believe the administrator, myself, have a meeting with them next Monday. We're going to go to them and try and work that out. So hopefully by February, we'll have these agreements in place. H R Green is putting in the grant request to the Council of Mayors, which is due in March of this year, and it's eighty twenty matching program where they pay eighty percent of the project. So and they're confident in potentially having that grant awarded. So you will see these coming piecemeal, but we just have to get them approved so we can get them over to H R Green for the grant approval. All right. I don't think anyone signed up on the citizens wishing to address the board. All right. So then move along to regular business. Pardon my cough. Approval of the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three committee, the whole meeting minutes as presented. Do I have a motion in a second?
So move.
Second.
Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee McNeil. Any discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Luther.
Yes.
McNeil.
Yes.
Pierce.
I.
Masonic.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. I forgot to mention, I took the liberty this week of flip flopping our meetings. This is the committee of the whole meeting first, as opposed to the regular business meeting. Due to the fact that we did not have a meeting the second Wednesday in December, there were several items that needed action that we have not been able to discuss. So hopefully we'll go through the cow items, the discussion, and then the regular meeting, we could just go down the line and vote. So the first item on the committee, the whole meeting is the Veterans Committee Presentation. Deborah Rentner and Mary Dominiac present this project. I know I received a call from or text from Ms. Rentner that she had a health issue that happened today, so she will not be here this evening.
So you're stuck with me. Happy New Year, everybody. We wanted to take an opportunity to share with you what we're doing with the Antioch Veterans Memorial that the board has supported. Before I kind of walk you through that, I want to introduce a couple of our board members that are here with us tonight. First of all, Carter Bell, I don't know any of if how many of you might know Carter. Carter lives in the woods of Antioch, right? Carter is been a long time resident of Antioch and is Army and has been very involved with ROTC over the years. I'm gonna see if I get this right without looking at my notes. And so we're really proud to have him as part of our organization and he's got a lot of contacts with a lot of organizations outside of Antioch that we hope we can tap into for support of this project that you have graciously offered to partner with us on. Secondly, we have PJ Delp. PJ and her wife Carabath just moved into Clublands, right? So they're back in Antioch where they belong. PJ is also a former Army disabled veteran and very proud to have her as part of this as well. Tim Paestrop, who is not with us tonight because he's working, lives in Antioch, he's a firefighter, his wife is a firefighter, and he works up at Uline, also Army. As you know, Debbie is Army and I'm a civilian, but I love that. So that's why I get to be part of this. As you remember, you all agreed that the village would support a memorial and one of the first things that was done after you approved that was Debbie took the opportunity to work with the local attorney and created a five oh one C three, which is the Antioch Veterans Memorial. Our goal is to raise the funds in conjunction with the partnership with all of you. Thank you very much for donating the land. For those of you that may not know where this is going to go, it's going to go over by the Bill Brooks Memorial entrance across from the park to be named. Right now, the basic fundraising goal, which is one of the things that I want to talk about, is approximately five hundred thousand dollars to build this and we are still waiting to hear what kind of construction, labor and materials we can get donated. Josh Bowler, who is obviously working on the big park, is working with us on this and one of our goals is to create a memorial that will tie into what's going on across the street. So it's going to be about fifty feet diameter and I want to show you just a couple pictures in case you haven't seen them yet. So these are renderings that we use to drive understanding of the costs, but and it's a little hard to see, but in terms of the location, but oops, totally hard to see. So basically what we're looking at is a design and this has gone through Manheart Consulting. They've given us the costs and have looked at the opportunity for us to put this on that piece of property. There are going to be six, actually six foot granite monuments, one for each of the six branches of service. So that would include Army, Navy, Marines, Coast Guard, Space, Air Force, sorry. We also are going to have in the center, a monument. We went back and forth on this and have landed on an eagle because we felt that that represented not only the United States, but rather than have an actual figure there, it would be hard to find a statue of a man or a woman that represent the veterans across the different wars and the history of our country. So we decided and are recommending that an eagle be placed in the centers. But what we're trying to achieve here is a place of reverence. So we've got benches. Go ahead, Jim, I think maybe another. Yeah, this gives you a little bit more of a close up. Our goal is to have the six monuments with the logos as well as flags of each of the branches of service. Next one. It's just, you know, kind of a drone view of what it would look like. We also, in addition to having those six flags, we would also have the US flag, the flag of Illinois, the flag of Antioch and the MIAPOW flag. So these are just to conceptually show you what we're planning on doing. And one of the reasons we wanted to be here tonight was to see if you had any suggestions, recommendations, and hopefully support the direction that we're taking with this. So I think, yeah, that's a good one to leave there. So we kind of missed the boat a little bit in terms of getting anything started this year now that the weather is finally turning into winter. But I also just wanted to spend a few minutes sharing with you what we're doing from a fundraising perspective because a half a million dollars is a lot of money. And hopefully it will be less, but it's going to be a big number. So what our goal is, even though there's just five of us on this board, our goal is because this is a gift from the community to the veterans who have served. We want to engage as many residents as possible. Trustee Bluthard has volunteered to work with us on fundraising, has had some really good ideas representing not so much the village, but as a resident, and we will be inviting others to join us as well. So we're looking at corporate giving, we're looking at civic organization giving, we're looking at individual. So kind of the big picture and then all the way down to the individual, whether it's a veteran or a veteran's family or just someone who supports veterans such as myself. We are looking at putting together platform of you can be a platinum sponsor, gold, silver, bronze level. So we'll have different levels for that. We're hoping that we can find sponsors for each of these monuments. So that's one of our goals. We also are going to sell bricks, just like we did at the theater did, and I think the library did, so that people who want to purchase a brick with the name, either their name or the name of a family member, whatever. Some of the other things that we're going to do, we want to do a fundraiser probably in the summertime. We want to do some raffles. We had some discussion about different kinds of raffles. We have Facebook media, social media, traditional media. You know, we're going to do the kinds of things you see in town, go into the different restaurants, go around to all the different organizations and what I call a dog and pony show to help people understand what we're trying to do and really try and draw the community in to hit that number. So I know you have a busy agenda, so I'm not going to spend a lot more time other than to say to you, these are the things that you as a board can do to help us. First of all, obviously continuing to support the project. Number one, we do have a Facebook page, Antioch Veterans Memorial. It would be great if you could like it and share it with your friends. I just finally went through the morass of trying to get a QR code, so that'll be going up for people to make donations. So certainly, if you'd like to make a donation, that would be very much appreciated. And anything that the village can do through their media relations, website, Facebook, et cetera, to promote this would be very much appreciated. So that's my spiel for the night. If anybody has any comments or questions, I'm happy to attempt to answer them.
And just for the board's knowledge, we did already, we did the soil borings, which came back. Okay. And we also, like Mary said, Manheart did do the pre-engineering to make sure that this would all fit and be supported in that area. And again, she mentioned it, but Josh Bowler, and I forget the group that, what's the name of the group?
The Great Lakes Construction Association.
Yeah, they always pick a veterans, a project or two, and I believe this is one of the two that they said they're going to highlight. So.
Right. And that's where we're hoping we can get materials and labor to offset that half a million dollar.
So with that, questions or comments on the board?
I don't, no questions. I just really appreciate all the effort you're putting into it. Excuse my voice, because I know how much time you're putting into this and the other volunteers, and I just look forward to making this happen sooner rather than later. And I can't wait till these pictures are widely shown because I think people get excited about it. It's a beautiful memorial and I think it's an add to that whole section of town and it will be much appreciated, I think.
Thank you. Our goal is that once we presented to you, we didn't want to go out into the community until we had come to you, but that's kind of what I call the dog and pony show, but thank you.
Looks fantastic. Thank you for all of your hard work. Very exciting. And my only one comment is I know District Thirty-four is putting together a wall for graduates and things like that, so that might be a good way to work with them to get the word out. Because I'm sure a lot of those families, myself included, would also buy a brick or do something if they're also working with District Thirty-four on their wall. So just a thought, but I will.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, help in any way that I can. Oh, thank you, Mary.
Right. Trustee Pierce.
Um, I think it looks wonderful. I like the eagle. I had hoped it'd be a statue of me, but the eagle's much better. So I do think this is a good job and I look forward to be coming to fruition. I know trustee Bluthard challenged us a while back on his donation and I would, I would say, once I recoup from my Christmas bills, I will match his donation plus added dollar just so I could give more than him.
That'll be twenty-five hundred and one dollars.
You gave five, five hundred and one, so.
He's got a better memory than you.
I was hoping I could get that five.
Trustee Masonic.
So I would challenge everybody else to give money to them. Thank you.
Trustee Masonic.
Just to make sure nobody's left out, we've got Paul Haddock involved and Jay Jaswick involved in American Legion, the DFW, correct?
They are actually not officially involved in the organization. They both made the decision not to be part of it, but certainly we see the DFW and the Legion being part of that.
Yeah, that's not my understanding because they didn't know anything about it. So.
They didn't know anything about what?
They didn't know anything about tonight's meeting or anything about this stuff.
Well, that's because they're not part of the organization.
So I, that being said, I hope, I hope you reach out to get them involved and I hope this follows the Paul Bomack kind of format of Leninhurst because he did a fantastic job of Leninhurst.
And we are, we have reached out to them already.
So Paul Bomack, I just want to reach out and say Paul Bomack, Paul Bomack, Paul Bomack. Hope he's listening, if ever listen, he did a great job in Leninhurst. He's a, he's a hero of Leninhurst, great former mayor. I just want, I, just anybody that's served, reach out to them. I don't want anybody hurt feelings that, that they didn't know about it. They wanted to offer, you know, helping hand. They didn't know, they want to be a part of it.
Trustee Masonic, thank you for your comments. I can tell you that they both resigned from the organization. So if there's any question about them not being part of it, then you might want to talk to them directly.
Offer a helping hand.
Absolutely. Mentioned that earlier.
My only thing, there's probably someone that may not know about it. So not just those two individuals, but anybody else that would sit there and not know about it, saying, we could use your help.
That's part of our plan. Like I said, we wanted to come to you first before we went out into the community. Thank you.
All right. Trustee Peterson.
I think it's lovely. It's a beautiful memorial. It's going to be beautiful. I agree with you about the eagle in the middle. Love that. And I too heard that Mr. Haddock had resigned, which was sad. But you know, the project has to go forward and I'm sure that you are very welcoming to anyone who wants to join because the more the merrier and it will make many hands make light work. So Groundhog Day, I retire, so I'm going to join you.
Okay, wonderful.
Okay. All right. It's beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Go raise some money.
All right.
Get it moving. All right.
Know where you live.
All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item three, discussion regarding intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Antioch and the Board of Education, District Thirty-four for the shared use of a school resource officer. Chief Gotcho, I know the District Thirty-four representatives are here as well if there are any questions.
Yes, this is, this agreement is the culmination of many months of work between Superintendent Broviak and myself to bring a school, full-time school resource officer program to District Thirty-four. So I'd like to thank him and his team for all the hard work that they've put into this. It's been an item of discussion that's been before the board a couple of times in an informal format. I'm sure you had an opportunity to peruse the agreement. Very similar to the current agreement we have in place with District One Seventeen for School Resource Officers. Like most school resource officer programs, the, the large majority of focus of the agreement is to clarify the goals of the program and the objectives, which is primarily to provide a mentorship and a in many ways, like a social worker type aspect to kids to help partner and work with their school support staff and then the obvious building and student security needs that we can help address by being an intimate part of the district. I won't belabor the matter unless the board has any specific questions. Of course, Superintendent Broviak's here as well to answer anything from the district.
Any questions from the board on this side?
No.
Any questions on this side?
No.
Trustee Pierce, any questions?
No, it's long overdue.
All right. Yeah, it's on the next agenda for action. So not, not next agenda, but next meeting, correct? Yeah. Thank you, Chief Gotcho. Next is discussion regarding the Planning and Zoning Board Recommendation related to a special use permit for an electronic messaging board sign at WCPD Elementary School. Director Garrigan.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This matter comes before you for this evening for a request for a EMB sign. As you already know, all electric message boards do require special use. The Antioch District Thirty-four has actually been working with the Booster Club. The Booster Club has been really wonderfully generous and has donated a EMB sign for the WCPD school. As you recall, there was, there is an existing message board, which is obsolete. The applicant is simply replacing that sign. The overall sign is square footage is thirty-six square feet. The applicant, again, there was a favorable recommendation by the planning commission. The only variation from this, our state or policy is the applicant is really looking for permission this evening to be allowed to incorporate within their general messages, again, for the students and for the parents. Just for proximity, this is actually, the site is actually located at the drop-off area. It's in campus, it's not visible from Run Seventy-three nor will be visible from any neighborhood. But more of our, going back to the variation, the applicant is requesting the opportunity to display one of nineteen approved graphics. I think it's in your packet. It's also on the PowerPoint, but there will be one graphic per day or per display and there'll be nineteen approved graphics. They're incorporated as exhibit A in my staff report. So with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that the board has. The applicant, the representative of the District Thirty-four is actually here this evening to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any discussion or questions on the side of the board?
Just a quick question. I read in there and knowing where that's at, this really isn't visible from One Seventy-three or residences. As I say, we're really trying to look.
Correct. It's fully within the campus, truly a campus setting and is adjacent to a drop-off area and parking. So this would not be visible, most importantly, from any residence.
Perfect. Thank you.
Right. Questions?
I don't have any questions. Just a comment that I am in favor. I like it. And I saw the happy birthday graphic, which I know kids at that age really love. I don't know if that's how they intend to use it, but it's such a special day in elementary school. And like trustee Bluthard said, I think it's in a great location where it's separate from other businesses and residences. So I'm all in favor of it.
All right. Trustee Pierce, any comments?
I do like how it's not, as trustee Bluthard pointed out and the staff pointed out, it's not visible from One Seventy-three or the residence. If it was, I'd have some higher concerns for it. Is Mr. Garrigan, is the size about the same as the size of the high school?
It'll be a little smaller than that one. So the actual, yeah, a little smaller than what the high school is proposed.
Okay. And what about, what about the brightness of it? Is it going to be as bright as the one at the high school that I've asked repeatedly to have the brightness turned down so I can stop having migraines when I drive by the high school?
Right. Again, but just for the record, we are working with the high school. That matter will be coming back to the planning commission and future, hopefully the village board in the next two months. But as relating this applicant, the applicant will be complying with the village's ordinance as it relates to EMB signs. They are not asking for any relief from the village. It's pretty stringent EMB regulations as it relates to either white or red lettering on a black background. So if there is an issue, staff will work with their technology department to address that.
Okay. I really have no problems with this one.
Thank you. Trustee Masonic. Trustee Peterson.
I'm just one comment. I'm glad that they're going to comply with the black and the red. With a lot of kids, I've been there for drop-off and there's a lot of kids running around. If it's too bright, that can shield the child out there where people are driving around. So I'm happy to hear that. It's a great idea for them. I do like the happy birthday, too. I'm.
Thank you.
For this.
Thank you. All right. Next item is discussion regarding the Planning and Zoning Board Recommendation related to the Final Plaid of Subdivision for Clublands Phase Four. Again, Director Garrigan.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This matter comes before the village board in many ways for a housekeeping matter. What is before you this evening is a final plat approval. They actually, the village board back in two thousand and seven did approve the final plat for this phase, phase four, for the record of the Clublands development. Unfortunately, back in two thousand and seven, the developer did not record that final plat. Based on that fact, staff did have this discussions with the applicant. They are required by ordinance to come back and seek the reapproval. This matter did go before the village planning commission and they did recommend approval. Now, as part of the final plat, most importantly, staff is completing a review of the final engineering of this proposal, the actual preliminary final, I'm sorry, the final engineering was completed back in two thousand and seven. But our village engineer has been working with Manheart Engineering to refine that and make sure the engineering is consistent with our engineering standards. This proposal would be approximately three hundred and forty-seven single-family homes. For the record, as I already identified, the homes will be sold, Lennar, which again is the largest single-family home builder in the Chicago metropolitan area, would be purchasing all three hundred and forty-seven lots as part of this phase. This phase for the record is consistent with the approved preliminary plat. Typically, you're required to approve a final plat if in fact is consistent with the preliminary plat. And also, we're hoping, or the applicant is hoping, subject to getting approval of this final plat, to proceed with starting underground and utility improvement sometime in the spring of this year. And with that, I'll be more than happy to conclude my staff reports.
Right. Questions or comments on the side of the board? Nope. Trustee Pierce.
No.
Trustee Masonic. Trustee Peterson. All right. Thank you for your report. Next item again is Director Garrigan, which is discussion regarding a hotel market study, field research analysis report related to hotel recruitment.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. One of the things that staff has identified for the past number of years is the opportunity to make a recruitment of a hotel or hospitality because of the proximity of the village of Antioch, to the Channel Lakes, of the Guards of Wilmot, all the forest preserves, all the natural amenities that we have. We really think there's an opportunity, exciting opportunity to recruit a hotel hospitality, a major franchise. We, as you know, we have one existing hotel at One Seventy-three, but we believe there's an opportunity. We've actually had an opportunity to talk to different franchise, national franchise companies, and they have been very generous in providing us some real input. What they advise us to do is to work with a hospitality consultant to basically do a market analysis. And that market analysis, in a day, would be used to basically help us market the village of Antioch to national franchise hospitality, hospitality and users. So based on that, we, Mr. Sorella and staff, we proceeded with interviewing different consultants. Based on our analysis, this evening, we are making a recommendation this evening that the village retain the services of HMI Inc. out of Fort Myers, Florida to proceed with what we call field research analysis. And as I've identified, that would be a sum, sum of approximately nine thousand dollars with a forty-five hundred dollar retainer. The turnaround periods, as I identified in my staff reports, approximately thirty days of extensive research and thirty days to prepare the study. So approximately sixty days to complete the study. This is consistent, this market, this proposal is very consistent. It's actually, actually less than what the, the other consultant proposed. Also, we, many years ago, I did get a quote from retail strategies for a hotel analysis that was over fifteen thousand dollars. So we believe for what this is being proposed for, this is a fair estimate of a completion of a marketing study. So what, what is our end goal? Our end goal is to use this field research analysis to start basically reaching out to hospitality and users, i.e. hotels. This study will help us identify what the best brand is, what type of franchise, price points, all those things that we need to have an intelligent discussion with the end users. The real positive aspect is we, we did have our consultant look up the STAR report. STAR report is used widely by the hospitality industry to try to look at the saturation level or what, whether it's a viable market. We have really very good numbers, a strong market. So we're confident that working through this consultant, using this study, that we can recruit a hotel, national franchise hotel to one of our sites. As you all know, we have several, I think, potential sites along the One Seventy-three corridor, potentially Eighty-three corridor. So we like to work with our potentially end users. So this evening, staff is seeking approval by the village board of a approval of a field research analysis completed by HMI Inc. With that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Aside, trustee Bluthard.
My only comment is it's, it's well overdue. I mean, we need a hotel around here or options from someone has family that lives outside of town and trying to find them places and having, you know, when my parents were alive, I had them thrown down in Gurnee or somewhere because they couldn't get a place. So I'm looking forward to this. I think this is a well, well-needed expense and the return on this investment would be tremendous if we could land one.
Trustee McNeil?
Just a quick question, and I think I know the answer from talking with staff earlier, but. There's really um, not an option of working with the hotel directly, correct? This is sort of like a prerequisite for most of the major.
Based on our consultants with the end user, we 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 had a really great discussion after several discussions with a national franchise company. Um, and their strong recommendation was to complete this study, you really want to have a realistic way to market your town and reach out to them, this was advisable.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Trustee Pierce?
Yeah, I'm I'm thinking a lot about this one, um. We have an existing hotel that over, I'd really be curious what their vacancy rate is and what their success rate is. And how many occupants they're drawing in and do they have, are they regularly full, is that why people can't stay there? Or is is the fact that they're not a national chain anymore have anything to do with that? Um, I mean, so we we've got an existing hotel, are we helping them succeed? Or we just letting them languish on the vine out there and then we're gonna go out and get, look for other hotels? Um, i- if that's our plan, uh, I I don't think it's it's quite right. I think our plan should be to make our existing hotel successful as much as possible. And bring in additional hotels, especially if we're building out on one seventy three. Um. But I don't know where we're at with the existing hotels, I think we may be killing it.
All very good points and respectfully, I think that we can accomplish both goals, I think we can can continue to work with our existing. Hotel on one seventy three, unfortunately, that is not a national franchise, as you know, there's been several, there's been an evolution. A different national franchises with that hotel. Nothing, I think, in this potentially retaining this consultant would preclude us to continue to work with that um hotel. Obviously, we want to make sure it's viable and successful. Um, but based on the star report, based on our discussions uh with the hospitality consultants, we believe that the numbers. As reflected in this star report show shows a very healthy viable market. Um, for for Antioch, so it doesn't mean obviously recruiting another franchise would have a necessary negative impact uh on that existing hotel.
I I just want to make, I I'm I'm sorry, your honor, I I just want to make sure. I'm just want to make sure we're not killing the the a hotel and we end up with a vacant hotel building that turns into some sort of tenement or something. Because we want to bring.
Good point, fair point. So we're committed to working with the existing hotel, they've been for many, many years, as you well know. So we want to see them succeed, historically, they have succeeded uh over the years. Um, so we're gonna work with that existing hotel hotel owner to make sure that they're also successful.
Thank you.
Right, because.
Well, this is gonna be my theme of this evening, so nine thousand dollars, so I just want to make sure this is the theme of the night. So we're trying to build the village hall, we're trying to build Grim Road. We're trying to build Public Works building, we keep spending nine thousand here. We, where is this in the budget that we keep spending money, taking money out of the budget? So then eventually we don't have money to build these other facilities.
Again, all fair points, you know, we've identified that some will probably come from our business downtown business district. So we have identified the sites along our commercial corridors, at least one seventy three. Um, again, as I've, I I, you know, we we have talked about it before. There has been actually higher quotes, again, retail strategies gave us a fifteen thousand dollar quote for a hotel study, we've been talking about it for many years. Realistically, this is necessary if we have any um, real. Chance or opportunities to attract a national franchise.
To back up that point, we'd get sidewalks and disrepair, trip hazards. That have not been addressed. That need need desperate need for people that could trip that have not been addressed. And we keep spending money left, right. And. Study after study, and we keep spending, spending money for study after study. And we're not gonna get the rent grain to build Village Hall, Public Works. What Grim Road? What fix our infrastructure because we keep picking away. That money meant for business district was supposed to be fixing sidewalks on Main Street and whatnot. And those sidewalks are trip hazards all day long.
Right, no, I mean, all very fair points.
Especially, especially, we brought it up time after time, right at that, at uh. The stoplight at Main Street and and right by the rivalry, that's a trip hazard. And nobody wants to address that, so we'll spend nine grand here on a maybe, maybe, maybe we'll do a study. But yet then someone's gonna trip and fall, break their leg, an elderly person, and we'll just ignore it. I just, I I just don't get study after study and nothing, nothing comes up of it, it just, it just, I just don't, I just don't understand it. I just don't like that. We don't, we don't care, we don't take care of our infrastructure, then look at the other stuff.
Well, it's as you well know, I think uh, economic development is a long term term endeavor. Uh, as you know, when we approved the business district, we actually talked about, one of the purposes wasn't set up studies to attract end users.
One hundred percent agree with that, but we haven't done, when the business district was passed. We haven't done day one of fixing sidewalks, none of that was done when it was passed.
I just inter, I'll just interject it, I um. I hate studies, especially ones that just go on a shelf and are not useful.
Yes.
Um, I hate those, and I was on. Michael and Mark and the hotel um groups. And across the board, there is serious interest in coming here, but it's like a nonstarter for the conversation to go on without this. Item, so if it wasn't requested specifically by. The Wyndham's and the Hiltons and the so on and so forth, specific in actual conversations, they all stopped the conversation at this point, well, where's this report? So uh, I agree, I don't like spending taxpayer money on studies that go on a bookshelf, but this one is um, actually has some value.
Your your honor, I hate, I hate to interrupt. If if it's requested by these hotels, is there any way we can, if one of them comes, we can build the cost back into their their building here?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm probably not, other than the taxes of the business district or like some of the properties we've um. Identified could even be village owned properties that would um, allow us to start collecting some TIF money uh in those areas, so. Not directly, but you know, the hope is long term. Um, these are conversations that um, myself and uh staff started at some of the ICSC conferences. And they've been actively following up with us, so there is interest, especially now with the um. The dealership and the uh property with that development starting, uh, it might be time, they want to see real projects going. And we could actually show them some real projects going now.
Okay, I'll finish my point.
Thank you, trustee Mason, for letting me interrupt you.
Same.
That's right, Scott, we're gonna get into a conversation about spending more money on data collection. That, you know, if you think this is, you're gonna stick your neck out on this one. You know, we're gonna collect data with no backend on the, on what's coming up on the future agenda. So if you think this is a good idea, I'll probably vote no on this one. Um, because I haven't seen any emails to support this in Denver. So. I would like to see some infrastructure get fixed prior to. This because it's been, the business district's been in in effect for two years, no infrastructure has been touched.
Director Torres, can't put you on the spot?
Do you mind coming up for one second? So the trustees are raising valid concerns, and there's three items on the cow tonight, which are, you know, um. In total, nine, twenty one, close to forty some thousand dollars potentially. Um. Are these items that are um, that would fall under a category in the current budget? That would between now and the end of April, or is it something that we would have to work into next year's budget?
I think in making some of the projections for the year, the rest of the year and my conversations with some of the. The staff, it is doable for this budget year.
Would they, would they, where were the funds?
We can, we have some um, items that are not gonna come through for this year in the business districts. So we could take it out of there, we also have some funding in the general fund and contingency. We have some admin stuff and equipment that's not going to happen, so we can make it happen this fiscal.
Just to make sure that.
Yes, I just finished going through some projections for the rest of the school year, so it's fresh in my mind.
Okay, alright, thank you. Um, but no, valid concerns, um. Trustee Mason, do you have anything else to follow up?
No.
Alright, trustee Peterson?
Thank you, your honor, um, it's very important that we go forward. We have put all of our emphasis on building downtown, improving Antioch. The one seventy three corridor is paid for the downtown, has paid for all the improvements that we're doing. It's important to continue to develop that corridor. We have someone sitting in the audience that's spending a lot of money in that corridor. A new, a new dealership, it's, it's very exciting. A hotel would be perfect, but if we have to spend this money to get something large like that, it's well worth it. And Dennis, I just want to tell you that I know you're working on the sidewalks. And you you guys are out there all the time, they really are. Well, I don't see anyone else working on sidewalks other than Public Works, so um, you're doing a good job. So I have.
Alright, so uh, this is not, well, this is on, I believe, the next uh, agenda tonight. Alright, before the next item, just a little disclaimer, um, the next item is discussion regarding a contract providing for the recruitment of a new village administrator. Ms. Eccles will present this, uh, since the village administrator Eccles will present this, um, just for the board's knowledge, public knowledge. This is, we've been discussing the next steps in filling this position. Um, I've had continual discussions with our interim administrator to see if there's any long term solution that way. Um, there is another individual um, that I've had discussions with that may um, potentially be interested in um, applying for this type of position. And so I guess this would be, if neither of those avenues are really um, a path forward. How do we go and fill this position? And this also gave me sticker shock, so I want the board to see what it looks like. Uh, look at the different levels and then, you know, give either no authorization or authorization up to an amount or a procedure. To fill the village administrator position if the other two discussions do not move forward. Alright, where's yours?
Good evening, your honor and village board, um. Due to the upcoming requirement, retirement of Mr. Keim, um, and as the mayor mentioned. DAF SOT cost estimates from multiple well-known and reputable professional consulting. Firms that have expertise in the public sector recruitment industry and a long track record of clients in the municipal realm. Um, since the typical recruitment process for this position takes approximately a hundred and seventy five hours to conduct. Uh, this would be a a difficult task for staff to accomplish without tapping the resources from a professional firm who would be able to help us cast. A wider net through a nationwide search and outreach. Um, the most effective cost proposal that we had received was from Gov HR. Which was uh, recently acquired by MGT Consulting. So the total cost is twenty four thousand five hundred dollars and as Seda had mentioned, we do have contingency funds that are available. To cover this expenditure in the fiscal year twenty four budget. Um, three options were presented to us with the full scope recruitment, of course, being the most robust. Um, this process would be broken out into six phases, beginning with brochure development and interviews and of course, ending with the successful appointment of a candidate. Um, so to provide you with a a brief overview, um, in the early phases, one-on-one group interviews with stakeholders. Uh, identified by the village would be conducted and they would coordinate a two-step interview process. So the first round interviews would include four to five candidates and they narrow it down in the second round to about two to three. They would also supply the interview questions and an evaluation form, and in terms of the timeframe, again, that recruitment. Um, typically takes between ninety to a hundred and twenty days. Um, alternative options that we also explored included a limited scope recruitment, which was three thousand dollars less than the top tier. And that's designed for clients that are only requiring partial assistance with recruitment. So while while many of these components were similar to the full scope, um, there were some key differences. In this case, only a flyer would be developed as opposed to a full recruitment brochure. Um, background checks would not be conducted by Gov HR. Um, interview questions and assistance with contract negotiations would be the responsibility of the village. And also perhaps the most notably Gov HR would not offer any form of a guarantee regarding the selection and tenure of the candidate. Um, with the full scope recruitment, however, all of these services would be provided, including that upon the appointment of a candidate that should the. Um, candidate and the employee leave the employee of the village within a twelve month period. Um, they would conduct an additional recruitment for the cost of expenses and announcements. Um, as long as we would make that request within six months of the employee's departure. Obviously, we hope that this would not be the case. Um, but I was informed that in the event that for whatever reason, if it's not the right fit, whether that's, you know, a village decision or the employee's decision. Um, that most of their clients do opt for the full scope services. Um, the last option on the table was for a virtual recruitment, which was a highly condensed process that includes basically just the job announcement as well. And the posting as well as candidate matrix that they would develop, which would identify key position requirements that we would utilize in order to evaluate candidates. Um, while the full client roster is in your packet, uh, fellow local clients include Barrington, Fox Lake, Lake Barrington, Lake Forest, Lake Villa. Libertyville, Lindenhurst, Long Grove, Mundaline North, Chicago and Wakanda. Um, so again, this matter for the board's consideration is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a master services agreement with Gov HR. For the executive recruitment of the village administrator position in an amount not to exceed twenty four thousand five hundred dollars. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Alright, trustee Blueheart?
I don't like this going first stuff. Um, my only comment is really a statement. There's no, nothing personal against any of you. There is nothing more important than the village administrator, as far as I'm concerned, um. It is the one employee that runs this village. At the instruction of the board and the mayor on a daily basis, it needs to be here, it needs to be quality, it needs to be qualified and. If this is what it takes to get that person, we need to do this, um. To sit there and hope we find someone or, and and maybe we have, but I'm just saying is I think we need to use a source to get as many. Interested people involved so that we get the best possible person for our account, whoever that is, she is. Um, and I think um, this is, it it's a necessary expense at this point. And and I'm, I support it a hundred percent.
Trustee McNeil?
My only question, um, just because I don't know, is was there any other option where the village could cast like their own? Job posting, but then get assistance with like the background, the interview, like that part, or is that not an option? That was not one of those.
Right, so I guess the closest option to that, there's not a true à la carte, I think is kind of what you're referencing, where we would be able to. Um, just navigate a couple of those items.
Saying we kind of know what we want, but then get assistance with.
Again, with with them being such a large recruitment firm, um, there's limited areas in which they really customize that. So, you know, our options really that would be the closest to that then, if that's what you were seeking would be the partial recruitment and that was three thousand dollars less than the full recruitment. Um, and then again, with that, you're not receiving that guarantee, which they did say most of their clients, if they're gonna opt for one of the two, that they see many more of their clients going for the full scope at that point.
Okay, no, I appreciate your feedback on that, just such an expensive cost, but I agree with trustee Blueheart, it's a very hard position, we want to find a great um candidate, but I was just. Yeah, interested in the the cost on this, if there was any other way to try to save a little bit, but that was my only question for now.
Alright, thank you, trustee Pierce?
So if I understand this correctly, we've got this proposal before us, but you may not use the proposal, so you just want us to approve the proposal in case you have to use the proposal.
In case, yeah, in case we have to move forward, so um, I would say that uh, within the next um. Two weeks, I'd probably have some clearer direction on if we need to move forward in this. two weeks, I'd probably have some clearer direction on if we need to move forward in this direction.
I, I don't know why, if you, if you need to move forward. I mean, I think as Brent says, getting a village administrator is the most, one of the most important things we do to make sure things are running smoothly and correctly and working with the board and all that good stuff. Um, I'm not sure if we just don't need to proceed forward with this or, or where we're at. I mean, it's, it's kind of, kind of a sideways move, I think, to say, well, you may need to do this. You may not need to do this.
I, I understand what he means. Um, if I could, if I, if the path forward and saving the twenty-five, four thousand dollars is available, that's obviously my preference, but, um, you know, I don't know if that's a fifty-fifty chance or not, but we need to move forward with the search one way or the other to, um, because what do you say, ninety days, hundred and twenty days?
Ninety to a hundred and twenty days. So you're looking probably three to four months, start to finish.
So I guess the assumption is that, yeah, that I would, I would execute it, but if in the next two weeks we can, um, if I could present something to the board to avoid that expenditure, that's my preference.
So why is this, this has, this, we're not approving this right now. We're just discussing it. It won't be on.
Discussing it. Yeah, just, just again, if we need to move down that path so that the authorization is there to execute the contract to move forward if, if we can't fill the position, um, internally or another, another way.
Uh, I'm looking, I'm looking, it's not on the agenda for later tonight.
Basically, you, you got twenty thousand dollars.
That's news to me, but I, I don't, um, I would never do that, but yeah.
So you got twenty thousand dollars you can spend. And, and the judgment would be that you're going to get someone who's qualified, that's got, you know, a qualified degree in village administration. You're not going to get someone that's got a janitor's degree.
Correct.
So, so you're asking for five thousand dollars more for your, your, your spending expense.
Correct. To execute this if we need to go that bad. Correct.
Five thousand dollars more.
Correct.
Basically from what you, you can spend above your, your expense line.
Correct.
I don't see an issue with that.
Trustee Pierce?
I, I don't, I, I wasn't through.
Sorry, sorry. Go ahead, Scott.
I was just gonna say, I think we need to proceed forward with this immediately to start, start recruiting. I don't think we need to sit there and wait and decide, maybe we do, maybe we don't. So I agree with trustee Mason. I don't see a problem with this, except for we're holding.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Trustee Peterson?
I don't see a problem with it either. Let's do it.
Okay. Thank you. Um, next item is discussion regarding amendments to the employee handbook to include Martin Luther King Junior Day as a paid holiday. Um, just assistant village administrator Echols again.
Thank you, your honor. Um, the next item for the board's consideration is the approval of an ordinance approving and adopting amendments to the employee handbook designating Martin Luther King Junior Day as a village holiday. Um, this federal holiday marks the birthday of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Junior, and it is an official day of service which celebrates the civil leaders, uh, life and legacy. So if the board approves the observance of this holiday, village offices would then be closed this upcoming Monday, January fifteenth, and every third Monday in January thereafter with eligible employees receiving regular pay for that day.
All right. Discussion. Yeah, I was shocked that we're open in the first place. So, uh, trustee Bluthard?
Now just please talk to my HR department and get them to agree to this also.
Uh, trustee McNeil?
No comments.
Trustee Mason? Trustee, oh, sorry, trustee Pierce. I'm sorry. I just looked to the left and I forgot.
No comment. Way overdue.
Okay, trustee.
Way overdue.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, next one is discussion regarding amendments to the employee handbook related to vacation payout policy.
I make a motion to table this to the next committee of the whole meeting so we can have a full discussion instead of having a jam-packed meeting and just squeaking this in.
Is that okay for timing?
That's fine.
It was a motion to, motion to, uh,
Table to the next committee of the whole.
Okay. All right. We don't need a motion. My Roberts rules. People are helping out over here. Um, all right. Next one is an update on the twenty twenty-four. It's Thursday and kickoff concert series and other events. Uh, Mr. Searle.
Thank you, your honor. I just wanted to just give a brief update of what events we have that are new to the calendar, um, for the twenty twenty-four schedule as well as, um, just at least have you see concert lineup right now? Um, you'll notice that we did have seven concerts last year. We do have eleven this year, so we have increased some of the concerts. Um, I will say as far as spending goes, um, what our budget was last year with seven, um, we have, we're really close to that same number with eleven. So we were really able to kind of, um, work in some, we, we believe really good bands. Um, that'll bring in a lot of people. We tried to do a very diverse group of, um, entertainment this year. So it kind of hits every different genre, um, as well as then adding in the Shamrock Shuffle. Um, we've never typically done anything in, uh, St. Patty's Day or around that. Um, so we wanted to do a fun family event out at Osmond Park, start utilizing that park a little more. It'll be a five K with some events going on afterwards, live music. Um, so full family event. And then as well, um, in the fall, um, we did take the Generation Weekend that we tried last year with XRT Radio. We did remove that. We did that last year. Um, it was during the Fourth of July time and it was just a really busy time. And so it didn't seem to bring in as many people as we'd like. We also had some really kind of crummy weather. So, um, we moved an event into the fall, the Small Town Smokeout, which is a barbecue contest with professional teams that will come into town. It'll be where the band shell is. So it'll be a really fun way for the community to see professional barbecue teams as well as have live music and events. Um, as far as, um, the concert lineup, again, I tried to stay within the same budget we used last year. Um, we also have the kickoff concert that will be, um, the same time as last year, the very first concert of the year. Um, there was some significant cost to that one. Um, but with all these events together, um, the, the rough amount of money was, was nearly sixty-one thousand with all the bands and stuff. Um, but we were able to, um, with sponsorship from several local businesses, um, bringing about seventy-two thousand already in sponsorship money. So essentially all the events that we have for the summer right now, um, have already been, um, funded. So there won't be a huge, none of this money essentially will come out of the general fund, um, that we have done in the years past. So, any questions on those?
Questions on this side? Trustee Bluthard?
One, just quick, quick. I just want to confirm. I was trying to look up real quick and I couldn't find it. That's not Labor Day weekend, is it? Or is that the weekend after Labor Day, the sixth and seventh for the?
Yep. It's, uh, that would be the, it's like the first end of falling out Monday falls on, I think.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Trustee McNeil?
No questions. It looks like a fun lineup and, um, I'm excited about the Shamrock Shuffle and the Smokeout. The only comment I had is it'll be interesting to see attendance wise, because there's a lot of tribute bands where we just get like a narrower pool of people on those nights. Like I love Green Day, but does everybody? But it, but I think it'll be fun and something to try out.
Yeah. So that was obviously a concern, um, but it seemed that some of the ones I think we picked are ones that are very popular over the generations. And so we're, we're hoping that we have good success. But again, we'll monitor and then in years, you know, the future years, we'll see if those ones work.
It looks fun. Thank you for your work on it.
Yeah.
All right. Trustee Pierce?
No, your honor, no, no questions, no statement.
Trustee Mason? Trustee Peterson?
Just a comment. Um, I love the addition of the Smokeout barbecue. That's going to be great. Um, that'll be, um, something new and hopefully we can do that every year.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, the lineup looks great.
Thank you. Um, next item is discussion regarding an ordinance authorizing and improving an economic incentive agreement by and between the village of Antioch, Illinois and Raymond Chevrolet, Inc., DBA Raymond Kia. Uh, this is regarding the economic incentive. Uh, we have director Garrigan to present.
Yes, thank you, your honor. Again, this matter comes before the village board. As you recall, in October, uh, the village board did, uh, review and approve a letter of intent, uh, with, uh, the Kia dealership as it relates to an economic development agreement. Uh, that letter of intent basically in some and substance summarized certain incentives. Um, what is really again, in some ways a housekeeping matter, that formal economic incentive agreement, which is consistent with the terms of the letter of intent, um, or letter of agreement that was approved by the village board. October is coming before the village board this evening. You have that attached to your staff report. Um, very briefly, very quickly, again, consistent with what was approved by the board. The village has agreed, uh, that we would return the first hundred thousand dollars of sales tax generated by the future Kia dealership. Anything above that threshold, uh, would be a split fifty-fifty. Um, that's consistent with, again, the what was approved in October. Uh, there will be a maximum, maximum of six million dollar, um, uh, sales tax incentives during the duration of this agreement. As I outlined back in October, there's no really realistic potential that we, we would reach that level. Uh, there would be a one million dollar, one-time, one billion dollar payment, uh, upfront to a Kia dealership. As you well know, uh, we've been working with the applicant. Um, the applicant is proposing an eight million dollar, um, dealership. Um, we're working with the engineers right now. We're hoping to start construction or start moving dirt, uh, on this project. Exciting project, uh, sometime this spring. Um, and then obviously there would be a, a fourteen-month period of time to commence a completion of this project uh, at the point of the building permit. Uh, and there's also a callback provision, uh, within the four corners of this proposed economic development agreement. So again, this proposed agreement is consistent with what was reviewed by the village board, uh, back in October and approved by the village board. Um, but with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. Mr. Scarpelli is here this evening. Yeah, if there's any questions to the applicant. Thank you.
Trustee Bluthard? Trustee McNeil?
Nothing on my end.
Trustee Pierce?
Nothing.
Trustee Mason? Trustee Peterson?
Nothing.
All right. Um, thank you. Moving on. Um, next item, item twelve, discussion regarding ordinance amending the Antioch Village Code regarding the loading and unloading of passengers within the village of Antioch, Illinois. Um, this, uh, I'll rely on village attorney, uh, Sully to present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Um, tonight before you is an ordinance that is based upon the village's statutory non-home rule powers to regulate the health, safety and welfare of the community. Um, there are provisions in the Illinois Municipal Code, which we are bound by as a non-home rule even again, that, uh, allow us to impose reasonable regulations to ensure that the community is kept safe, including those regulations for the maintenance and control and jurisdiction over our streets and the loading and unloading of passengers and the regulation of, um, carrier, uh, vehicles such as buses, uh, taking people in and out of the village. Um, pursuant to that authority and that authority alone, we have proposed for you an ordinance that regulates how bus traffic and the dropping off of people with certain exceptions is to be governed by the village or in the village. Um, we have a reasonable control on this in so much that it is a permit process where if someone wants to make a mass drop-off of people, they are required to contact the police chief and receive a permit for that. Um, what we do like about this ordinance is that it does give due process protections to these commercial industries, which is a very low standard under constitutional law, where they have an appellate process if they are denied. As such, we would look forward to fielding any questions that any of you have about this and a positive recommendation at the regular board meeting with regards to this proposal.
Thank you, trustee Bluthard.
Um, the fine structure of five hundred dollars, is that sufficient? Is that a standard? Is that state law?
Um, it is within the parameters of state law, um, sufficient in so much that would it serve as a deterrent? Um, I believe it would. I know that other municipalities in the area and throughout the Chicago metro region are using that as a fine structure.
That's all I have. All right. Trustee McNeil?
No questions.
All right. Trustee Pierce?
How does this affect things such as, uh, when there's, say, the sailor dinner and they bring four or five busloads full of sailors in and drop them off at the VFW or, uh, the Chamber of Commerce brings in four or five buses with visitors to, uh, their Kringle Village and, and stuff like that? Do they need to get permits?
An excellent question, trustee. Um, I am going to the exact verbiage to point that out, but we did control for those events which have occurred in the village in past years to allow for that. Um, any type of drop-off that involves a vehicle of a gross motor vehicle weight of less than sixteen thousand pounds, which would be like a car. So example, that would be, um, a family bringing soccer kids back and forth. Um, that would be wholly exempt with regards to this, um, relative to, and I'm just going to pull up the exact section, sir. Uh, relative to commercial vehicles with a gross vehicle weight that exceeds sixteen thousand pounds. If this is based upon a practice that has occurred regularly for the village prior to January first, twenty twenty, it is exempt from the regulations of this ordinance. So I believe that Kris Kringle and the Kris Kringle mart has been going on since prior to January the first, twenty twenty. I know that the sailor's dinner, for example, has been going on for an extended period of time and far before January the first, twenty twenty. As such, they would be exempt from the regulations of this ordinance. Also, we are lucky in this village to have an excellent police chief, a reasonable man, who will be charged with the enforcement of this ordinance. And I'm sure he will proceed and prosecute these violations in a reasonable manner.
Okay. Yeah, because I was very concerned. I mean, we do have Mr. Scarpelli in the audience. He does pay for the buses for the, for the sailors' dinner and, and, uh, I just want to tell him thank you right, right now, but also to make sure that his buses do arrive. Um, and so it, it's, it's very nice to know that it's prior events or, or grandfathered, so to speak. Um, the, the fine level is five hundred dollars. I meant, you, you also mentioned in there impoundment if necessary.
Yes, impoundment is there is, of course, as a non-home rule unit, we only have limited authorities. Also, as a municipality, we only have limited authorities, even if we were a home rule unit. Impoundment is an exception that we will use to the fullest extent provided to us by Illinois law. And I would never hold up one of Mr. Scarpelli's buses to bring the sailors to the sailors' lunch or dinner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Mason?
What if they went by train? And they started piling on where the last train stopped and all of a sudden we had a thousand people on the train. And they started loading them up on the train and where the last stop, the train stop.
It'd be a big train. The, um, the scope of this, we do not have any, it's an excellent question, trustee, but we have by state law and federal law, no right to regulate rail traffic, except where that is specifically granted to us. So that would be outside of our dominion. Um, what would? And I believe also the intercity buses exclusively for transfer of peoples that would be normally moved by Amtrak. So if there was a, if a bus came in because a train broke down, that would be exempt from this. So while a good question, I don't believe that we have jurisdiction over interstate commerce through locomotives.
Like to put them on the train.
So let me, um, add one thing, because I've been on several calls with mayor's groups and other groups regarding this process. So, and, um, I believe, um, when Jeff was out of town, um, Norm Johnson gave us an update at our last staff meeting. Um, we have been instructed by, um, the city of Chicago, the state and otherwise, if we do get a, a bus of migrants or a trainload of migrants, um, we are instructed to send them to six hundred South Displanes to a processing center. So we've talked about whether we would do that by train. Obviously, our train doesn't run all the time. Um, the, uh, people that have been coming here on buses usually have, um, I don't want to say a sponsor or two with them that are basically handling their whereabouts and processing and chauffeuring them. Uh, we also said, you know, worst case scenario, if we needed to charter our own bus or a school bus to, to deliver as instructed to six hundred South Displanes, um, we would do that. So there are contingency plans, um, both, you know, regionally and locally. So that would be what we would do in that instance. We would maybe, you know, have to incur the expense of chartering our own buses or school buses to bring them to the processing center. But that would be the next step. That answers that question. Trustee, uh, Peterson?
All my questions are answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any other discussion on this item? All right. Next item, item thirteen, discussion regarding the village social media policy and code of conduct. This was a requested item to be added by trustee for discussion. I believe you have the policies in your packet. The social media policy really is focused on village controlled social media and sites. The code of conduct, we've discussed multiple times. I would open the floor to any trustee that would want to start the discussion or open the discussion.
Well, I can start it.
All right, trustee Mason?
So mine is gonna be a question basically, the, the board. Because this, this is an obvious, obvious question. So the question would be, because the two kind of flow together, the code of conduct code of conduct and the social media policy flow together as one. When you have one going after another, who would be policing that policy? I think I know the answer. That would be the board would be the only one that policed that policy. There would be a village administrator. There wouldn't be anybody else. We police our own. And I'm gonna leave it up to the attorney to answer that question.
Sure. So yes, we have three applicable provisions. There's an ethics policy, which is generally irrelevant to this, a social media policy. And then the code of conduct as we discussed. And for the most part, relative to trustees, because there is overlap in the last two, the social media policy and the code of conduct. And for the most part, you are correct. I shouldn't say that. You are correct. Relative to elected officials, that would be policed internally. And again, as a non-home rule unit, we have the authority, let me rephrase that, the corporate authorities, you have the authorities to sanction other members, to establish rules for codes of conduct and to allow for sanctions in those roles. It is not done by an administrator, is not done by staff. It's done amongst the body itself.
And the next question would be, how far does that sanction go? Does it sanction the pay, pay of that person or does it go for above and beyond extra security, the, the, the cost of administration? And how far does that sanction would go?
So relative to the sanction on, obviously, we cannot sanction the person's words, right? That would be a violation of the First Amendment and to sanction someone for what they said would run afoul of the Constitution, which I'm sure you're aware of, and I know that we've discussed previously. Relative to a sanction that people oftentimes bring up, and we have not discussed this, but removal of office that we are not home rule unit. Under two cases, under the same citations almost, from twenty seventeen and twenty twenty-three, the state of Illinois does not allow non-home rule units to entertain the concept of impeachment or removal. Sanction normally comes in under parliamentary procedure through censures and the public acknowledgement of a violation of the rules. That has, under a Tenth Circuit case from, I believe, nineteen ninety-seven, has been deemed to be valid as an exercise of the enforcement of the will of in plain English. The board can act to say that you're violating the rules that it's established for its own conduct. But the stripping of money, the, the, the non-payment of of stipend or a monetary amount because of a person's trustee for certain action that is very questionable legally, in, in my opinion, not permitted under Illinois law at this point in time.
So if we believe as a board that someone potentially did something that maybe they shouldn't have done, we probably should put this on the next agenda and have a hearing potentially.
So if someone did want to make an accusation or if there was a person to make an accusation that one of these conduct codes was violated, yes, a person obviously, I'm sure you'd agree, sure the board would agree, has a right to be heard for what they're being said they had done in violation of a conduct or a policy and have a right to speak in their own defense. Not to sound this is a hyper litigious matter or overly lawyerly, but a person has a right to defend themselves. It's a basic tenet. And they would have a right to know what they're being charged with, for lack of a better, or what the claim is that of how they specifically violated the policy.
So can we put this on the next meeting or I don't know if you call it a, a hearing or best wording for it's for put it on the next agenda for a definite, yeah, there were some issues raised on this person. I don't know if I
I think you, I think you'd have to, to put on the agenda.
Yeah.
You'd have to, yeah. And basically what the, what the like, obviously allegations are, or the, or the, or the portions of the code of conduct or other policy that was violated.
Well, basically it's using position of using emails that are privileged emails that are only subject to her and posting those emails on a Facebook page and using threats other, which is basically in the code of conduct with, with obvious threats of, you know, and other people could say it's not a threat, but when you threaten someone with a lawsuit, that is a outright threat. And that's strictly in the code of conduct. You can't do that.
Yeah, this would be line item on this agenda for the, I would believe January twenty-fourth is our next board meeting. If that was a request of the board and the will of the board to go forward. And we would have it with certain specificity. This board has run afoul pursuant to the Open Meetings Act or under the Open Meetings Act. Not in this incarnation, but a prior incarnation, a prior board. We're, we're going through a process of whether there was a sanctionable activity and not being on the agenda the right way. We won't make the same mistake again.
Right.
Like the same mistake will not be made again. We will learn from the mistakes of prior boards and we'll treat this with specificity. Does that mean that there would be some? And I, I believe in an issue of fundamental fairness, that the, that to state this outright gives the public the knowledge of what the board will be talking. And that will happen if it is on an agenda.
I think it should be on the agenda. I think if the board says it should be on the agenda, I think that person was subject to a warrant letter. I think every person on this board has asked her, ask that person to pretty much stop it and the, and the
When a boarder, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Can, can the trustee state the name of the person he's referring to? He's mentioned her and them and, and that, and we have multiple women on the board, so I'd like him to specify.
Yeah, not, not a vicious it's between us. And, and the issue she's using privileged emails, she's actually, you know, and, and I hate to say me, 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 but she's posting other businesses' names on her emails. She posted my business name on her email. She used my name on her email. She's, she's posting village email. She posted the village clerk on her email. She's crossing out stuff. She did a GoFundMe page on her email. That's not, she's, she's doing stuff that's not. Basically, if you read the code of conduct, I mean, it's, it's not the conduct of this board. Plain and simple. I mean, she's got, she got a letter, you know, I, I don't know, a year ago. I was, I was not here to, to, to put my name on that letter, but everybody other than me signed that letter to ask her, please, please stop, please stop. I've asked multiple times, please, please stop. And she continues, continues every eight hours habitually to continue to post whatever. And, and she continues to say, I'm a private citizen. That's fine. That's fine. But she continues to post privileged emails that's village emails on her page.
Well, I will, I will also add that behind the scenes, the amount of staff time, energy, opportunity cost to be doing other things is in the thousands of hours of time over the last two and a half years. Including, you know, my time, you know, Monday morning from eight AM until one o'clock, this is all we're dealing with. And I just don't think it's fair to staff also to be dealing with this stuff on a daily basis. So in that regard, I just want to add my two cents on what goes on in behind the scenes because there is a real cost to the stuff. And it's a very frequent topic around village hall. So.
And, 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 and validate my point. I think she crossed the line when she started posting other people's businesses on her Facebook page to start her battles. So just don't think that's an act of a trustee that sits up on this board.
So I have a, I have a, a request from trustee Mason to move this to a regular business item at the next meeting for a review of the code of conduct and potential violations. So any other discussion? To move this to the next agenda or not to move this to the next agenda? Trustee, I'll start on this side, trustee Bluthard.
This, this, this issue is beyond frustrating. The fact that we have to sit here and have a discussion about people arguing on social media about political issues that have nothing to do with this village or the operation of this village is very time consuming, like you said. And I'm just gonna call it what it is childish. I think both sides of this issue use any opening and incentive to attack the other side, right or wrong. If one says it's red, the other's gonna say it's purple. If one says it's blue, it's green. It doesn't matter. And it's, 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 I don't think the scope of who's paying attention to that is that large. But I think it is very disturbing or that's right, here at the village level. That being said, it's, I don't know if censoring an individual is gonna do one thing or help this situation out. I'm willing to listen to any case brought against any trustee for a censure and, but I want to see examples, not just a discussion. I want to see what was posted because not everyone has access to all these posts. Some, some trustees I know have been blocked from certain individuals, so they don't see all these comments and everything else. So I think if we're going to do this, we need to do it properly, fairly to all parties, so that we have the evidence presented in a way that shows what trustee Berman is being accused of and in turn where that violates our code of conduct and so that we can make a judgment on that that is fair to all parties. If, if this is fair to all parties and everything else, then I have no problem having this on the agenda and being discussed. And knowing that this won't make the issue go away, but I think it might be a necessary step. But I just want to see that this is fair and proper. We don't have any issues like the last time the board censored some trustees and that, that get overturned down the road, number one. And number two is, I'd like to see some evidence that this is gonna do something other than just us talking for another two hours about this subject. Trustee McNeil, that's all I have to say right now.
A question for attorney Visali. I know one of the concerns that citizens have raised is whether public officials can block comments and things like that. I know this is before the US Supreme Court. Is that something the village should consider maybe incorporating in this? After those rulings are made, or is that something we should talk about now to have a position on? You know, if you've got a public page, can you block somebody? Can you not? I know that was just one of the issues that I raised. I don't know if it's something that should be tabled once our highest court looks at it, or if you have an opinion.
I would never purport to be as smart or as wise as the, as the United States Supreme Court. But the, yes, it's an issue that's still before litigation. It'll be interesting to see how it shakes out. I'm relative to that and collateral, and I'm not ducking the question, but if you have public items on a private Facebook page and a FOIA comes in on that, how is that FOIA treated? Because to me, it would become unduly burdensome because a person's Facebook page might get ads for everything that they talk about at all times. So yeah, that is an interplay. It's when the constitution was written, no one envisioned the Facebook or Twitter or X or whatever we're calling it these days. As such, I think on that specific issue, it probably behooves us to wait to see how the Supreme Court rules on that specific issue. Notwithstanding, we do have conduct policies that can be reviewed on certain issues. Again, I, I, this is a new and evolving issue of law. And there's different people have different opinions. That's why we are all lawyers, right? And, but I do know relative to the FOIA, you know, the interplay of when you post a public issue on a social media website, when does it become a foible action? That's a real problem. And it's something that if we do end up revising these policies, it's something we should admonish people about because it could become a real issue.
And then currently in the documents, our policy now, it doesn't really spell out the next steps, correct? Unless I missed that, there's no, if you violate this, then we do this or?
So if you, it's an excellent point and something that I've been poring over. The, it says that it's subject to sanctions is set forth in this policy. And then there are no sanctions of policy. The third act of the play isn't written. So what we would do in those instances pursuant to Illinois law, where there are blanks, we go back to the rules of procedure. We go back to Robert's rules of procedure and there are sections under that with regards to a board sanctioning its members and censoring its members. I will have to, let me rephrase. I am happy to educate the board on that. This, again, will be done in a manner, if it is pursued by this body, that follows all the procedures of Robert's rules where we're not specifically set forth in our own code. And it will be well notified on the board meeting agenda if it goes forward, so we don't make the same mistake twice, right? But yeah, you're a hundred percent right, trustee. If you look, there's a bunch of lags on here and that's because I can't find where the story ends, right? The choose your own adventure has no ending to it.
So it reverts back to Robert's rules?
So I, yeah, in all instances where there needs to be an interpretation or Illinois state law, it reverts back to Robert's rules of procedure. Robert's rules of procedure does have this, so it is covered there.
And I think part of this conversation long term is to look at this and say,
What do we need to?
What do we need to do to make this actually mean something?
Yeah, just because it is such an evolving area of the law too. I mean, there are some possible code issues currently, but just things are changing.
All right, trustee Pierce?
Wow. My first question, and this is straight to the attorney. Are you able to issue to the board at a hearing, a statement of fact that laws have been violated?
Well, the board, no, it would not be. I mean, it wouldn't be, I am not a prosecutor in this instance, to draw an analogy. That if a board member says that there is a violation of conduct, then that board member would need to discuss that and say why they thought that it happened. The body, as I, and I'm not, don't take this as an affront, but like I said before, the board governs its own actions. It's not me who governs the actions. It's not me who sets out a case or what would be similar to an indictment. But the board brings up its own to say that I believe these were met, these were taken. Board vote on this.
So basically you're telling me that despite the fact we're being told that her GoFundMe is illegal, her release of village emails without a FOIA is illegal, her, her actions on Facebook and Twitter were being told are illegal. You're not, you're not able to tell me it's illegal. I have to decide whether that's right or wrong.
That's not what I'm telling you, trustee respectfully. What I'm telling you is if this board imposes, wants to impose a sanction on one of its other members for conduct, that's the province of the board. I don't respectfully, I respect what all of you have done. I would never I would never run for public office, but with that, with that comes the obligation to do that. I I'm not one to say that of this body, you have transgressed the rules that this body has made. I can tell you what the rules are. I can tell you what's happened in the past. I can tell you what I think is legal or illegal or to be determined as legal or as illegal, but I can't tell you that we as a body think that this person has acted outside of our membership rules. I can refer things to other bodies to determine if they believe that it's um been a violation of law, but I am not, I can't do it. I just, I can't. It's just not. Not only that, it's also, it's a conflict. I mean, it's a, it's a pure conflict. You have one board member saying another board member did something wrong and presumably board member number two says I didn't do anything.
Well, if if that board member was to, if that board member was to go get a AR fifteen and go to a bank and rob the bank, who would determine that that was illegal?
Probably the Federal Bureau of Investigation. Or the state attorney or the ATF. It's again, if you're talking about crimes, that is not the province of this body. This body doesn't judge whether someone committed a crime or not. Those matters are referred out to prosecutorial bodies like the Lake County State's Attorney, Attorney General, FBI, ATF, Board of Elections when applicable.
So we're facing acquis- accusations that she has violated the law, committed crimes. Why are they not being referred out to the proper authorities?
So I am aware that both the Illinois State Board of Elections has um knowledge of the allegations and that the Lake County State's Attorney has knowledge of these allegations that have been made. Um I don't know to what extent or what exact facts that they have, but I do know that that I do know that both bodies have knowledge of these incidences or let let's be very careful, allegations of violations of law. It's not for mine to say respectfully, trustee, and I'm not trying to be adversarial. It's not for mine to say what a prosecutor thinks a violation would be or what a regulator under the Illinois State Board of Elections thinks a violation of election law would be. That's beyond the scope of my knowledge base.
Uh and and I'm not trying to be adversarial either. Uh I just wanna make sure we're dealing with what we're supposed to deal with and those people such as the state's attorney and the state board of election are dealing with the stuff they're supposed to deal with. I have no, in my opinion, no legal authority to prosecute alleged crimes.
You do not.
I have the authority to to look at her actions and determine whether they violated the code of conduct. And no, no matter how desp- despicable I may think they are, um I have to look at um how it's, how it plays out.
Trustee Pierce, that's an excellent point and one I probably, you have made better than I could. That we are a body of limited jurisdiction. It is our jurisdiction to look to see if these codes, if this goes before the board. If these codes and the words in those codes and the rules set forth in these codes were violated by one of its members, that's it. That's, that is the analysis. Beyond that, that's for other bodies and other persons and other agencies to determine. And I, you said it better than I could have. But just like we're a non-home rule unit, as I was talking about before, we are a body of limited jurisdiction. And our jurisdiction is with regards to the code of ethics, the social media policy and the code of conduct.
And 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 answer me this, in your investigation, the Roberts Rules, our final action we can take is to issue a censor as a board. Is that correct?
Well, that's an, that's an excellent question. So Roberts Rules does talk about monetary fines. If my recollection serves, it's not what it used to be, but it's not that bad. However, relative to monetary fines, there is also superseding Illinois case law that talks about this. If you, for example, and I'm just using this by way of analogy. If you remember a few years ago, the former Speaker of the House, I believe, brought a cause of action lawsuit against the former governor because they were not paying elected officials what they were supposed to be paying because they were out of session. Or budgets weren't being passed or something along those lines. And I believe that there was some analogous statements made with regards to um not being able to strip people of uh money. In Roberts Rules, I believe expulsion is a a possible mean of disciplining one of the board members. But as I said before, in two cases, quite frankly, both of which I was involved with, um the Illinois courts have determined that you cannot impeach a local body member, unlike um former governors have been impeached. So there is a little bit of interplay. State law supersedes Roberts Rules. Our local code would supersede Roberts Rules. For the procedural aspect of this and the sanction set forth in the code, they are blank. As such, we would defer to Roberts Rules of Order. There's a very long-winded way of saying, I have to look at it. I have to make sure that we don't violate state law if this is the path that the board chooses to go on.
What I hear you saying, and I I don't wanna be argumentative, and I do have a nice, long statement I'd like to make also probably. I don't wanna be argumentative, but Roberts Rule says we can expel. But by your explanation, the state says we can't, or the courts say we can't. Roberts Rule says we can take money, but this court say that we can't. The law says we're home rule, so we can't enact things to to provide sanctions that have uh an ability to strip her of anything. So is that my understanding correct so far?
Yeah, well, yes and no. Um we are non-home rule. I wish we were home rule and I'm sure our finance director does as well. Um but it gives, but we are a limited body that you asked an excellent question, a pointed question in the beginning of this. What is our jurisdiction? Our jurisdiction and what we are able to do as a body or what the body is able to do, the board, is to determine if the social media policy, the code of conduct or the ethics code were violated. With regards to what sanctions can be applied, the first thing we would look at is the constitution and the laws of the state of Illinois. Then our local code, and if it's quiet, if those are silent, we would look at Roberts Rules as to what is then available after we eliminate those things that we can't do under the laws of the state of Illinois or the federal constitution.
I'm I'm I don't, I don't, the problem is I don't see the end game here. The end game is we all walk out of here kind of wiping our hands, saying, oh, we feel better. But we haven't done anything to better the village.
So addressing that question, the Ninth Circuit of the of the the federal circuits are divided. And the Ninth Circuit said that a censure is not a violation of the First Amendment um in certain circumstances because it is in a statement made by the will of the board that you, you, board member, have violated the rules that we have established. And that admission, admonition is to deter future conduct. You can't censure someone for the same thing twice. Um but it's to deter future conduct. So um your question, trustee, I'll boil it down is what teeth is there? The teeth is that you are um being asked to determine that question. What happens if there is a determination of the codes of conduct that I had mentioned before? But you cannot expel, and I do not believe, and I'll check it again, of course, but you cannot strip funds.
So we can censor.
I know censure is an available option. I've been through that process before.
Uh I I've been through somewhat of that process before. Yep. So at the, at the heart of this are two issues. The first issue is what is she protected under the First Amendment to ha- to do and what is she not protected to do? And maybe you can define that for us as our attorney. And then if she has done things that are illegal, we have to send those to other places or rely upon other places to solve those.
In reverse order, absolutely. Number two, absolutely. So if you made an analogy about a bank robbery, I would not purport to be able to solve or stop a bank robbery under any circumstances. They would be referred out to a different agency. Now you are using hyperbole to make your point, which is a good one. But yes, if there is a violation of the election code, for example, chapter ten of the Illinois compiled statutes, that would be sent out. If there was a violation of the criminal code, that would be sent out respectively to the Illinois State Board of Elections and the prosecutorial office, whether it's, you know, state would be local state's attorney, Lake County State's Attorney. Federal would be um FBI, that type of body. Um I am not saying that those were done and I'm not saying that you know, this is, we're talking hypotheticals here, what would happen in that, uh relative to the First Amendment. You know, a person obviously has a right to express their feelings. They have a right to express their um and is protected, is um the first and most important of those constitutional amendments, Bill Rights. Notwithstanding, as I said before, the Ninth Circuit has recognized in a case that even those statements are not First Amendment, the the board was not found to be in violation of the First Amendment by saying that we have imposed these rules and you have violated these rules. So is it a narrow analysis? Of course it is. And anytime you deal with a person expressing their um thoughts on a topic of public concern, it becomes a narrow analysis and it's it's a tough thing. Um but we're not there yet, trustee. Um those allegations have not been made. And if there was an allegation, I thought would run afoul of the constitution of the state of Illinois or the United States, I'd let us, everybody know. And I'd ask us not to entertain the discussion of that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, in nineteen seventy seven, the Supreme Court overruled the Illinois appellate courts or Illinois Supreme Court on the Nazis being able to march in Skokie, Illinois and force the state of Illinois to allow them to march. But they also ruled that the display of the swastika was harmful, if I'm correct in my understanding of that from the Blues Brothers.
I thought it was seventy nine, sir, but yes, I believe that, I I know that to be true. Um I studied that case and I spoke about it in law school. Um but yes, it is. Um the Nazis were allowed to march in Skokie, Illinois. There's no question. That went all the way up to the Illinois and United States Supreme Courts.
Okay, see, this is the problem I'm struggling with here is I understand trustee Maisick's need to to uh bring this before the board and find some form of resolution. Um but I I I am very concerned that if there are allegations of crimes, that we should be directing you immediately to uh submit a letter to the state's attorney and the state board of elections to to come to ask them to reach a conclusion on behalf of the board. They're there to represent us also. If I understand the structure of the state.
You you know, you do understand that, sir, but I will tell you this. Remember, we are talking about two bodies of just two bodies or agencies with different jurisdictions. This body's sole purview with regards to this matter is in those three sets of codes, did the alleged, did the actions of the trustee as alleged violate those three sections? As I said before, is the Illinois State Board of Elections aware of this? Yes. Is the Lake County is the Lake County State's Attorney's Office aware of these matters? Yes. So whatever I am directed to do, I am more than happy to do and I'm I'm happy to do my job, as you know, trustee, but I am aware of that those bodies know about that relative to their jurisdiction dissimilar from ours, which determines those three codes.
I I understand, I understand that they're aware, but I think it 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 would behoove the board to put formally in writing that we request them to review and issue a ruling on the allegations of criminal actions on on a trustee's part. Uh because otherwise, uh as as the the wheels of government turn, they'll wait for us to come to a resolution before they advise us on on what the, what is actually legal and not legal. Uh it's very concerning to me that there's allegations that the GoFundMe that she hasn't used for a campaign yet, but could possibly use for a campaign, uh could possibly be illegal. There's allegations that she's uh allowed a child to sit at a bar in the state, in the village of Antioch. And um that may or may not be illegal by the explanations I've been given by various people. There is allegations that she's divulged um divulged um um emails, which I I think are public record once they're emailed. Um whether they're by FOIA or not FOIA, if she releases it, she releases it. Uh there's, there's questions of her issuing threats to individuals, uh which would be a violation of the anti-slap laws. Um so if those are the case, then then the appropriate individuals need to be involved in that. And then we as a board would have to look at her conduct otherwise on other items, whether it's the Twitter, the the never-ending Twitter uh battle she's got going on with the, her opponents who who um who have the the same free speech rights, rights that she has. You know, the 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 posts that go on and on and on um that from from both sides. Thank God I'm blocked from half of them. Um I I mean, I could, I could go on for hours listing all her alleged crimes and actions. But I don't know if they are crimes because the state's attorney hasn't said that they are. Other, the 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 social media experts are telling me they are. And it's not, it's not right um for for the attacks that she goes under and the tax, they they go under from her. Um it, the whole thing, as I think trustee Bluthart said was they say right and left, left and right, orange, blue, whatever. They they just feed on each other and attack each other and attack each other. I'm at the point where I am just agogged how terrible both sides are. I I I feel like I'm in a car trip to California with my kids and I wanna turn around and yell at them and tell them if they don't start behaving, we're gonna go home and not go visit Wally World and those seats are sitting in that car. I'm gonna be very comfortable after I get through with them, but I can't do that. Um and so I'm not sure what the answer is here because if I go after trustee Berman for what she perceives as her, her um First Amendment rights and her abilities and we censor her, a censor has not one ounce of teeth to it other than to make myself feel better. And but twenty minutes later, just like the kids in the back of that car, they're gonna start, they're gonna start right back up again and go at it. And then we're gonna do another censor. Then they're gonna start right back up. We're gonna, they're gonna go at it. I don't know what the end game is here and um I know we're gonna have this on the agenda next meeting and we're gonna have to come to some form of conclusion, but I I can tell you um somebody in this, on this board likes to chase windmills with their their donkey and their their big long spear thing. I don't forget what they call it. And if we censor, it's not gonna stop anything. It's gonna put wind in that windmill. And she's, it's just gonna go through the roof. What we're experiencing now is gonna go crazy because both sides will be, one side will be dancing in the streets and the other side will be shouting in the streets. So be prepared for what you ask for is all I got to say.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, trustee Pierce. Um yeah, we're next, trustee Maisick.
All right. I'm gonna help, I'm gonna help everybody out. There's two sets of rules even we apply. And I've gotta do it every year. There's laws and there's ethic. I gotta take an ethics class every year. So there's two sets of rules you're, you apply. This board has a set of ethics. Doesn't have to be you broke a law to be guilty of an ethic. So you don't have to be criminally rob a bank to be violation of an ethics rule. That's what we're talking about right now. So I hear what you're saying, trustee Pierce. Um I'm gonna give you an example. Twelve years of me being on the fire department rescue squad, eight years of being president. If I said today's world, I know more than John Kofler and I'm gonna go after the fire department and start putting all kinds of FOIA requests over there, I know better than those folks over there. I'm the village. They're a separate taxing body. Ethically, that would be one hundred percent wrong of me sitting on this board. I should be on that board, the fire district board. Ethically, that's wrong. Didn't break a law, but ethically, I'm one hundred percent wrong. Ethically, I violate the code of conduct for the village board. Ethically, I'm one hundred percent wrong. If I went and an email strat on my personal and said If I went and an email strat on my personal and said, I'm, I'm Ed Maisick, personal and citizen going after the fire department, I know more because I was a paramedic for 10 years. I was in the fire department for two years, served as president for eight years on that rescue squad. I know more than you kids. I may be right, probably not. But ethically, I would be wrong. And that's what we're talking about. Probably didn't break any rules or laws. But ethically, I'm wrong. And that's what we're talking about, the ethics of this board. Nope, we may, she may have not broken any rules, but we can't conduct business when ethics are broken on this board. We can't move forward. We got distractions. She was given a letter to quit throwing kindling on the fire. And she continues every eight hours to keep throwing kindling on that fire. Now, I hear what you're saying. But if one side doesn't stop, the others, they keep going after it. And I hear what you're saying. But when both sides keep throwing kindling wood on it, the fire keeps burning. And everybody on this board is asked, stop throwing kindling wood on the fire. And no one continues to stop it. And all sides on that side just stop it when, and, and truthfully, you know, she posted a one hour and that, that was taken down. I don't even know if she, she violated the two-party act of a conversation because that's taken down now. So I don't know. I don't know what she's doing. But she keeps throwing kindling wood on it, so where laws broken, it doesn't matter at this point. Ethics. And that's what the code of conduct is all about. It's ethics. The other part is secondary. Where laws break, broken, that's secondary. So that's where the point, that's where we stand right now. It's under the ethics. Ethics, you don't break a, you don't go to jail for breaking ethics, but you are sanctioned for breaking ethics. That's what people are removed for and, 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 and in, 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 in federal government for ethics. They're removed for ethics, ethics violations. They didn't break laws, ethics. So that's what we're talking about. There's two sets of rules. Broke the federal state law or ethics. And we're talking about ethics right now. Are the ethics of this board broken? Probably. Not going to say for sure, but probably. Everyone, everyone, I don't know. And what, what bothers me the most is she posted a conversation, someone had a, a, a private conversation. I had, Brent had one at a car show. Private conversation. His conversation was had by one person. She posted that conversation. I remember my conversation with Ed. Ed had a private conversation with this person. Nothing was said. Thank goodness for me, because I don't say much and nothing. I got no opinion. So Brent's conversation at car show, why would she post it? It's, it's meaningless, meaningless conversation. It's just, it just becomes an ethics violation. It's not, did she break the law? I don't think she did. But is it violate the code of conduct? Yeah, it's an ethics violation. Clear and simple.
Trustee Peterson.
I don't even know where to start. I agree with trustee Bluthart saying that we need this to be fair on all sides. I understand what trustee Maisick is saying about ethics. I think we're all tired. We're just tired. We're grownups here. Uh, we were always, I was always taught if you can't say something nice about someone, just don't say anything at all. It get, it's getting to a point where it's painful. And I don't like this. I don't like sitting here discussing this. None, none of us do. I don't know how to stop it. If, drain, if you're listening, please stop enough. I, I, I truly don't know where this is going to go. I don't know how censuring her is going to stop anything. I'm hoping to God that this conversation that we're having tonight might do the trick. It just might. On both sides, enough. It's something that has, in the very beginning, tore this community apart. Then we got back together a little bit and here it goes. It's escalating again. I, I don't have an answer for it. I, I really don't. I, I thought cooler heads would prevail and, and we would get on with this and this would just be a bad memory, but we're going. And this is what? The end of year three? This is enough. And if this, if trustee Maisick wants this on the agenda for the next meeting, so be it. I think we're going to need more information. Uh, we need to have a clear, concise objective, look at all of it. And if there was an ethics violation, then there was. If there wasn't, okay. We truly have to look at this and make sure that this is fair. I get no happiness out of any of this. It's all I have.
All right. Um, so I am, unless there's a majority of the board that objects to this, I am going to move this to the next regular business meeting uh, for a hearing on potential violation of the Co-Antioch, Village of Antioch Code of Behavior and Conduct for village elected and appointed officials um, to be a regular agenda item on the next board meeting, which would be January 24th.
You need to call out the specific trustee on that.
At the request, at the request of trustee Maisick.
No, 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 not that. The,
Oh, oh, it's a hearing. A hearing, yes, to see if trustee Berman violated the code. Has, there's an ethics violation for the code of behavior and conduct for the village elected and appointed officials to be heard at the next village board meeting. Anything else? Any other business? Otherwise, I entertain a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting. Don't move. Motion trustee Bluthart.
Second.
Second trustee McNeil. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Committee, the whole meeting is adjourned at 8:29. We'll take a five in order. 8:38 PM. Roll call, please. This is the actual regular meeting um, of the village board.
Trustee Berman is absent. Trustee Bluthart?
Here.
Trustee McNeil?
Here.
Trustee Pierce?
Uh, present. I'm trying to get my mute off.
Trustee Maisick? Trustee Peterson?
Here.
Mayor Gardner?
Here. Mayoral report, uh, there is none, but I, um, I'm going to ask for the consent of the board to, um, call some of these items out of order. I'd like to call, um, in this order number eight, nine, and 15 first. Um, so that the people that are here for those items can enjoy the rest of their evening. Any objection to moving those items? All right. Citizens wishing to address the board? Remember, you need the rule.
I'm bad.
I think, I think we know the rules here. Yes.
Oh, do you need to read them?
No.
Um, I just wanted to respond to a presentation that was made previously about, uh, the events that you're going to be adding this year, and I think they sound really exciting, especially the smokeout. But, um, you know, the businesses in town are really struggling. And when we have these big events, it brings a lot of people into the community, but they don't come in and really spend time on Main Street. So I'd like the staff and the board to think about, particularly with that smokeout, maybe to move it away from the band shell and may, and have it downtown. We've got alleys. You could set up different barbecue pitmasters in different alleys. You know, just to bring people into the downtown so they can see what we have to offer and, and maybe even the Shamrock Shuffle to have it be downtown so that it gives more visibility to the shop. So just something to think about, whether it's already cast in stone for this year, but maybe in the future, look at ways to bring people and have them spend the time going up and down Main and Lake Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda, there's two items. Uh, any requests to, uh, remove either of those items from the consent agenda?
We add three through six.
What's that? Oh, um, can we add, um, item 12, the consent agenda, which is the, uh, adopting the holiday for the Martin Luther King? Oh, it's an ordinance. I can't. It's an ordinance. It's got to be, it's got to be read.
Okay.
Okay. So let's just stick to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion this second to approve the consent agenda? Don't move. Motion trustee Boothard, second trustee Peterson. Roll call, please.
Bluthart?
Hi.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Maisick?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
All right. Um, out of order, I'm calling number, item number eight, which is, um, consideration, oh, well, there's two for the school. Where's the, that's our, that's our, it's not on this one. Okay. Consideration and approval of an ordinance granting land use relief for the property located at 850 Highview Drive, Antioch, Illinois, special use permit, electronic messaging board signed for WC Petty Elementary School, ordinance number 24-0102. I'd entertain a motion and a second waiving the second reading.
Shall move.
Motion trustee Peterson. Second. Second trustee Bluthart. Uh, roll call, please.
Bluthart?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Maisick?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Next item is, uh, item number nine, consideration and approval of a resolution granting a final plat of subdivision for property located at Savage Road, at Miller Road, in Antioch, Illinois. Clubland's Phase Four Resolution Number 24-04. Do I have a motion and a second? Don't move. Motion trustee Bluthart. Second trustee McNeil. Roll call, please.
Bluthart?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Maisick?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item number 15. Uh, consideration and approval of an ordinance authorizing and approving an economic incentive agreement by and between the Village of Antioch, Illinois and Raymond Chevrolet, Inc., DBA Raymond Kia, ordinance number 24-01-05. Do I have a motion and a second waiving the second reading?
Shall move.
Motion trustee Peterson.
Second.
Second trustee McNeil. Roll call, please.
Bluthart?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Maisick? Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Have a good evening. Um, all right, back to, what's that? Back to item number one, which is consideration and approval. Okay, so we have to ratify payments since we didn't have the meeting last time. So this is the ratification of payments of the December 27th, 2023 accounts payable as prepared by staff, the amount of $1,000,010,4632. Do I have a motion and a second? So move. Motion trustee Bluthart. Second trustee McNeil. Um, I know what the question will be, but I do know that the road program was paid out of that payment for $800,000 roughly. Okay, so any discussion on, uh, item number three? Roll call, please.
Bluthart?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Maisick?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
All right. Um, next item on the agenda is item number four, consideration approval of payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff, the amount of $2,354,514.58, of which, um, there was a large Bowler construction payment and a bond payment. Um, but we can discuss those further. Any, do I have a motion and a second? Don't move. Motion trustee Bluthart.
Second.
Second trustee McNeil. Discussion. All right, roll call, please.
Bluthart?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Maisick?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Uh, next item is consideration and approval of a resolution approving the purchase of placer software for the use of business development for business analytics for one year. Period starting January 15th, 2024. Resolution 24-02. Do I have a motion and a second?
Shall move.
Second trustee Peterson, second trustee Blutharts. All right, um, roll call on this one. Discussion trustee Maisick.
So we gather all this data. We get a dump of data with the end use. How are we going to use this data? So you get everybody's IP address. You spend 12 grand. So all this dump of, of IP addresses, how is it going to be used and what's the extra cost for use of the IP address?
So there, there's no, there's no acquiring IP addresses. Essentially what it's doing is it's just going to give us information to establish where the, the patterns are of movement through the village of Antioch. As far as what locations are, I don't know specific person's IP address as is, as attached to individual people. I just know that when there's a perimeter set or, or an area set, once someone with a phone walks into the area, their IP address pings that IP address or that, that geofence or essentially invisible perimeter and lets us know that they were in that area. So that way we can look at utilization of either a park, uh, you know, facilities, restaurants. It just gives us a better understanding of where um, the traffic patterns are and the, the user patterns.
So that, once you get this data, what's going to be used? You know the traffic pattern. So make it easier question. When you know the traffic pattern that so many people went to Joe's Hot Dog Stand, what are you going to use with this marketing data?
Yeah. So I mean, there's a couple of things that we're using for. So how to, to be able to say how, what businesses compared to other businesses, right? So we can see what businesses are getting more, um, you know, more use in other ones. Um, same thing with parks and, and recs or, or our facilities here in town. We know one park's getting a lot of use, other parks aren't getting used. It's going to give us the ability to understand what utilization is for our downtown, for our events, for our facilities that we have here in town, and as well as give businesses understanding of where our leakage rate is. So why are people going to other communities? Is it because we don't have those certain, you know, businesses within our community? So there's a gap analysis.
Okay, so I still don't understand. So you, you get an idea if people aren't buying hot dogs, then what's going to happen with the data? I still don't understand the marketing data. So you know people aren't buying hot dogs in Antioch.
Well, so it's going to tell us that in that case, if people aren't buying hot dogs in Antioch, that we need to start getting some hot dog restaurants in Antioch, right? Because people are leaving our community to go to another one. So it gives us what, that's what's considered leakage in the industry is understanding that people are leaving our community to go somewhere else. So then when we're looking at, um, you know, building a better community, what do we need to have in our community so that we people aren't and aren't taking tax revenue to other nearby cities?
So then what you're saying, let me see if I understand this, for the $12,000 is starting in the market, those other businesses to come in Antioch, that would be an add-on expense. The market, those other businesses coming to town.
No, so what do we?
So like just the hotel expenses that we got to get hotels to come into town. We'd have to get a hot dog chain to come into town. We got to get this other restaurant to come into town. We don't have enough hot dog sales in the town.
Well, so as far as the feasibility study for the hotel part of it, that's just unfortunately, that's the, the hospitality industry requires a, a, a hospitality feasibility study, right? That's just, unfortunately, that's the way that industry works. They require that to start that conversation. As far as our part of it, using a software like this can allow, allow us to know where our strengths or where our weaknesses are. And so that way, when we're starting to proactively go after certain business types, it shows us that we have the potential, we have the need, the want, the desire. Uh, and so when we're looking at possible, you know, possibly bringing in new businesses to give them real analytics to prove to our point that, hey, look, this would be a viable business with our community. There's no cost associated with that, other than the fact that we're now having the answers that we didn't have before.
So we've done these studies before with other companies that spent $100,000 with analytics.
Sure.
To get business in here, and that was just a waste of taxpayer money. I don't see, we get all this data that we need a hot dog place or everybody knows we'd probably be better off if we had a Wendy's. Fabulous. Uh, or a Panera Bread. They still, they still, there, you know, a lot of people would love that. I just don't understand how I just don't understand how off the data you would market and I'd spend the money to market, spending the twelve grand. You would have to have additional marketing money to spend off twelve grand.
Well, essentially the marketing money, if you wanna look at it that way, is essentially salaries, right? So you have somebody that's in position to attractively going out to, um, contact these businesses. If I have a Wendy's, for instance, that's, and it shows that all of our people, or a lot of people from Antioch that live in our town, are going to well, once, uh, forty-five and Searns School Road to go to Wendy's, I can show the patterns that people are leaving our community going there, and so for them, when they look at it and to be able to show real-time analytics, they can see that we're, people are traveling, so that in other words, if those here, they wouldn't need to travel. Uh, so their, their consistency of going to Wendy's could increase in their level, so, um.
So, so as well as the business recruitment, um, I just wanna make sure that when we, if we get the software, um, that we're using it, um, also to support like our current business community, like last time when we talked about the, uh, was the, the laser light show is the example, and like, they could show that after that laser light show, a lot of people went to Culvers, a lot of people went to Anastasia, so like, I wanna make sure we're giving that to the businesses, like, hey, this, you, you should market at this event or, you know, promote this event, cause you're getting a lot of business here, or say we have an event like, you know, it could be a village event or a chamber event, and we see that like, you know, nobody's coming to it, or it's, you know, dying out, I mean, at least then we'll have those numbers. Um, so I, I think, for me, I wanna make sure that we're using it as a tool for, you know, even our small shops on Main Street, like, hey, we got a Thursday night concert, nobody comes in your store, how can we fix this, or how can we?
Yeah, and, and quite frankly, it's gonna give us everything to see what those numbers look like, right? If we look at a, a Thursday in town, and we see that several businesses are doing very well, and others aren't doing well, just by traffic patterns or, or by individuals walking in and out of those stores, and we can at least support the fact that there's people that are going to certain businesses. At, at, at the end of the day, if we're bringing people downtown and they choose not to go into a business, you know, yes, we wanna do everything we can to help support that business, but there, there may be an underlying issue why they're not walking into that business, whether it's food costs or labor or, or service levels.
Hours of operation.
Things that we can, we can determine by saying, they're coming into certain places, right? I, I can tell you, you know, just looking at our, our downtown right now, there's certain places that do very well at lunch, and places that don't. So, it's gonna give us the ability to actually know what those physical numbers look like, um, and, and have some supporting detail that hopefully we can help some of these businesses if they actually see the numbers in front of them, or what those analytics are, or what those actual numbers look like.
Well, partially the problem is my, this is an observation. Is we have those, those Thursday concerts and whatnot, half the businesses aren't open.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
So, you spend twelve thousand dollars for analytics and you spend it all this dough to find out where people go, and you get closed signs on most of the doors.
Agree with you.
So, well, we both agree on that, so you're spending twelve thousand dollars and you find out there's nowhere to go.
So, my suggestion would be is if we can provide those numbers to certain businesses and say, look, when you're not open, here's, here's what numbers are, the businesses are currently open, that would hopefully sway some of these businesses to maybe gear towards hours of operation that change, right? But it's, again, it's instead of guessing or making assumptions of why businesses are successful in town, why others aren't, we have real numbers to be able to show that. And, and, and one other thing that I wanted to do too is just explain is that this is gonna allow us as a, as a village to use marketing dollars, use advertising dollars more effectively. Because if I know where people are coming from, we have a wine walk, right? And I can look and see, okay, we are really busy that day. Where are these people going? It'll tell you where they're coming from when they're going to, right? And so if I have a large conglomeration of people coming from Wisconsin, Kenosha, Racine area, when we're advertising in the future, that's the market that we should be infiltrating, right, or, or saturating. If we're not getting business from the liberal area, or wherever that may be, then maybe that's money that we're spending that maybe shouldn't, we're gonna use that on a lift.
Great point, so then you're gonna ask for more dollars for Facebook advertising for, if they're coming from Lake Geneva. You're gonna ask for extra funds for Facebook advertising, cause they're coming from Lake Geneva.
Sure.
So now there's an additional expense to this for marketing on Facebook or whatever.
We have a current budget right now that's, that's already established, it's been established by this village for using marketing. I'm just looking at taking that money and making sure it's more effective than being wasted.
Cause a lot of times, you know, my, my business is all marketing. So, you know, a lot of times you get overwhelmed with marketing, it's too much, too much passive marketing. And I, I would consider this passive marketing. Uh, you get this data, okay, I know how, how many people go to Joe's Hot Dog Stand. Okay, so, that, that did for me, so I'm Bob's Hot Dog Stand. How do I get more to Bob's Hot Dog Stand? I'm Bob's Hot Dog Stand, how do I get more for Bob's Hot Dog Stand? Everybody's going to Joe's. I'm just asking the question. I'm, I'm trying to compete with Joe's Hot Dog Stand, I'm Bob. I wanna, I wanna beat Bob, I wanna beat Joe, I'm Bob. You got all this data, how do I get more people to, to, to me, Bob, to beat Joe? You get, and I'm gonna come to the village, hey, you got all this data, uh, get me some.
So, my response to that would be is that our job would be to prove what those numbers look like. My job wouldn't be to, to cook hot dogs and perfect a recipe, or whatever that would be that made them go to Joe's instead of Bob's, I, I don't know.
My, my concern is with the data, data sometimes could be dangerous. Because data could be dangerous to someone that's struggling in a business. And depending on where this data goes, it could be, oh, hey, I got business over here, so, you know, you need to market. I'm gonna give my buddy this, uh, scheme because this is where people are coming from. So, market over in Lake Geneva, cause everybody's coming to Lake Geneva. So I'm not saying you would do that, but, but someone might say, hey, people are coming in from Lake Geneva to our concert, so market Lake Geneva, and they'll give that to Joe's Hot Dog Stand, and Bob's, and they're like, who gave me that data?
So, I would say that my job and my position would be
Not saying that you, not saying that you. I'm just saying, there's, there's potential, there could be potential abuse to data usage. And, and I'm just saying, I, no, you know, this is not, this is, you know, we're trying to build village hall, we're trying to build public works, this is not you know, we always spend twelve thousand here, twelve thousand somewhere else, and then we go, hey, we can't build public works. Village Hall, we can't do this, we can't do that, cause we keep spending little things here, little things there. And we keep doing all these studies and all this other stuff, or ten, twelve thousand, twenty thousand, thirty thousand dollars. And, and we don't get an end result, we don't get a, we, I don't see that result, we have twelve thousand dollars back in sales tax revenue.
I heard. Um, I know trustee Pierce had his hand up online, I know trustee Peterson, trustee Boothard. I skipped over trustee Pierce, did you ever hand up trustee Pierce?
Yeah, I did, um. I have a lot of concerns about this, I'm willing to support one year of it, but we really need to have safeguards in place, because to trustee Mason's point, if I'm Bob's Hot Dog Stand, and I noticed that eleven o'clock every Thursday, Joe's Hot Dog Stand gets real busy, at ten forty-five, I'm gonna have a hot dog special. Um, or if I'm a, if I'm a Sally's, uh, uniform shop, and I notice that Bob's Uniform Emporium is busy every Thursday afternoon, I'm gonna have specials on Thursday afternoon, using data collected by the village. I understand that we need to define what our market is, and we need to define who's coming to what events and everything, but I don't wanna turn into a source of data for all these businesses to go cutthroat on each other. Because if I'm desperate to keep my business open, I, I, I may, I may do what shouldn't be done. So, um, we need to have some real safeguards and procedures in place for day, how data's released to the public and to businesses, if we do this.
I just wanna make one thing clear, so this business that, that we're, placer, um, they offer this service to any business in America. So if Bob's Pizza Shop wants to pay for twelve thousand dollars, they're gonna get the same information I am. So this is not proprietary to government agencies, this is a this is a open information, uh, that's, it's available to any.
No, but that's their marketing dollars, they can do that.
Yeah.
That's their marketing dollars, they should do it.
Sure.
That's their prospecting.
Sure.
And they ought to do it.
But.
That's not for the village to give to another business.
Sure, well, yeah, we should, we'll come up with some parameters on, although, this, this shared.
Come up with those before we, we, we say, let's pass this, we should come up with a whole bunch of parameters before we just get, get the go-ahead and say, let's approve this without parameters in place.
Um, trustee Pierce, were you done?
Sorry, Scott.
Uh, no, I was just going to say, if I was Bob Hot Dog Stand, why would I spend the twelve thousand dollars when the village is?
Alright, uh, trustee Peterson, sorry, is this?
Okay. First of all, it's competition is good. This is free commerce here, um. This information, am I correct? This information is being collected anyway, everywhere. So, for twelve thousand dollars for one year, to see if this would work, to see if this would help. This is a great thing. Why wouldn't we go after this information? When we had that concert, the, the big country concert last year, it would be great to find out exactly where all those people came from, cause this town was inundated. I'd love to know the way it was marketed and where we pulled from, it would be very valuable. Any one of these events that we have, to find out where these people are coming from. It's amazing, just how about a parade, the Fourth of July parade? Wouldn't you love to know where these four thousand people are coming from? It's wonderful for us to have this information. And yes, we have to be very careful about how we use it, but we have to be very careful about all information. Isn't that what we just talked about for an hour and a half? What we really need to do is use this tool and try it for a year. And this could, this could be what we're waiting for, this could be the information we really need. And it's out there anyway, let's go get it. That's all I have to say.
Trustee Boothard?
Alright, um, some of the things I've, I was gonna say have already been said, but, um, if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, this is, this is a tool. We are investing staff in Antioch, we're investing infrastructure in regards to our new park and everything to attract people downtown, to attract businesses, to retain our businesses. This is just one small tool that would give our staff the ability, when they're meeting with potential businesses, existing businesses, data that normally those businesses might or might not have access to, that might convince them to come to Antioch, that might convince them to show them that look at what they're doing to try to retain and, and, and get new businesses here, they're willing to get us this data that shows that there's enough flow for this business, instead of us just guessing, or the, uh, some business has enough overhead costs to try to open up, and now all of a sudden, they've gotta pay twelve thousand dollars to get data that maybe we can provide them and show that they have the foot traffic or the car, auto traffic, whatever, it's just a tool. But to invest just in staff and not give them the tools, I don't think really works. I mean, we wouldn't invest in staff and not give them a laptop, we wouldn't invest in staff and, and not give them business cards or a phone or ability to reach out to people. This is a tool that they need, that they're asking us for, to help them do their job. Now, it is a one-year, uh, uh, contract. At one year, if, if they come back and say they haven't used it, it doesn't work, we, we don't do it again. Hopefully, they'll come back and say, this helped us secure this new business, or helped us retain these guys, or helped us do this, and helped us use our advertising dollars wisely, is what I'm getting, that money's already budgeted for in the budget, so they know they have a, I'll just use a number, a thousand dollars for advertising. If they are just spending it generically, it's going all over, it might not be hitting the people that actually come to our events. This will allow them to target it to the people that are actually coming to our event, so that advertising dollar will go further and be more direct and be a target. So, from an investment standpoint, I get it, it's spending money. But this twelve thousand dollars on this isn't gonna build us a public works building. Take a lot of many numbers of years of this software to get us the money to build a fifteen million dollar public works building. And we can walk and chew gum at the same time, we can do this and have them spend this money here and, and work to retain and recruit new businesses to town, and help our events and get people into town, and work on finding funding and doing things for the public works and other things at the same time, so. That being said, I'm all in favor of this, I think it's something we have to try and use, if it doesn't work, we don't continue.
Alright, are we ready for a vote? Alright, roll call please.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
No.
Peterson?
Yes.
Uh, four voting yes, motion carries. Um, next item is consideration and approval of a resolution approving the twenty twenty-four special events dates sponsored by the Antioch Chamber of Commerce. Resolution number twenty-three dash oh three, um, again, this is a, a Barbara Porches out of town, um, these are the events that we, with, uh, staff have worked through with her. Really, the only item, reason this is back on the agenda is because of the Taste of Summer, um, we're just approving the dates. Um, they're just, again, I think gonna be a food and, um, concert event. Uh, there will be no carnival, but that's why this is back before us to approve those dates and to approve the Taste of Summer to be on the regular weekend. Any, uh, motion in a second on this?
So move.
Motion trustee Peterson.
Second.
Second trustee McNeil, do we need a discussion on this one? Alright, roll call please.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason? Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Next is consideration and approval of an ordinance correcting a scrivener's error in ordinance number twenty-two dash oh seven dash forty for the Village of Antioch. This is, um, ordinance number twenty-four dash oh one dash oh one, um, do I have a motion and a second waving the second reading?
So moved, waving the second.
Motion trustee McNeil.
Second.
Second trustee Peterson, alright, roll call please.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. On item number ten, consideration and approval for a resolution, um, approving a letter of engagement with H M I for the completion of a hotel market study for the Village of Antioch for a total sum of nine thousand dollars, including a forty-five hundred dollar retainer, resolution twenty-four dash oh five, do I have a motion in a second?
Don't move.
Motion trustee McNeil.
Second.
Second trustee Boothard, uh, roll call please.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Hi.
Mason?
No.
Peterson?
Yes.
Alright, four voting yes, motion carries. Uh, next is consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Gov H R providing, providing for the recruitment of a new village administrator for an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. Resolution number twenty-four dash oh six, do I have a motion in the second? So moved. Motion trustee Boothard.
Second.
Second trustee McNeil, roll call please.
Luther?
Wait, wait, I got a comment.
Sure, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I got a comment, you went pretty quick there.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
I think that, that we vote this in and we put it in play immediately, whether we've got internal staff interested, or we, or there's friends that are interested, or there are acquaintances that are interested. I think that we need to put it in place immediately and do a professional search. So, I'm gonna vote yes for this, but I think it needs to be put in place immediately, and, and we get a, get all the candidates and, and go for the best candidates we get.
Alright, alright, duly noted, alright. Thank you, um, roll call please on this one.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Next is, um, item number, uh, twelve, consideration and approval of an ordinance approving and adopting amendments to the employee handbook for the Village of Antioch to include Martin Luther King Day as a paid holiday, ordinance number twenty-four dash oh one dash oh three, do I have a motion and a second waving the second reading?
So move, waving the second reading.
Motion trustee Peterson.
Second.
Second trustee McNeil, roll call please.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Next is consideration and approval of an ordinance amending the Antioch Village Code regarding the loading and unloading of passengers. An approval of an ordinance amending the Antioch Village Code regarding the loading and unloading of passengers within the village of Antioch, Illinois. Ordinance number 24-01-04. Do I have a motion in a second waving the second reading?
So moved waving the second.
Motion trustee Mason?
Second.
Second trustee McNeil, roll call please.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Next is consideration and approval of an ordinance authorizing the acceptance and/or acquisition of an easement pursuant to an easement agreement. For the village of Antioch Lake County, Illinois for Raymond Chevrolet. This is ordinance number 23-12-45. Do I have a motion in a second? So moved.
Is that waving the second?
I'm waving the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion trustee Bluthart, a second trustee McNeil. Um, any discussion on this? Otherwise, roll call please.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yeah.
Peterson?
Yes.
All right, last item on the agenda, consideration and approval of an ordinance authorizing the acting village administrator to sell, salvage, or otherwise dispose of equipment. Ordinance number 24-01-06. Do I have a motion in a second waving the second reading?
So moved waving second reading.
Motion trustee McNeil, second trustee, uh, Peterson, roll call please.
Luther?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Pierce?
Aye.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Five voting yes, motion carries. Administrator's report. You guys awake over there? Good evening.
We're struggling. Uh, so I'm gonna do the combine the PD report and the administrator's report, if you don't mind. Uh, so from the PD side of things, as you know, we host our shop at the cop event last month and a number of. The members of the board attended and were able to take witness to that spectacular event. Uh, we hosted 50 children. It was very successful. We got a lot of positive feedback from the families that participated in that. So just, uh. A thank you to our sponsors and then again to the board for their support for that, uh, important initiative. Uh, we are currently initiating the testing process for entry level applicants, uh, for police officers. Uh, the link is available on the village's website. It's also posted on our Facebook page. So if you know anybody that may be interested in that position, please direct them to, uh, the Facebook page or to the website. For that link, um, we are also currently seeking a part-time community service officer. It's a great opportunity if you know any young people that may be interested in a future law enforcement career, but aren't, have not reached the age or maybe haven't made that decision to go all in yet. Um, as you know, we are losing, uh, CSO Remington Page. He's moving on to bigger and better things in his career. I'd just like to acknowledge him, uh, for his, his years of service with us. One of his greatest contributions for us among many are that in a time where vehicle upfitting and. And, uh, finding vehicle equippers has been very difficult in today's market. He was able to leverage his prior experience, uh, as a vehicle upfitter to network internally. Not only saving us about six months in timeframe for upfitting, but also subs, uh. Saved the village a substantial amount of, of money by doing that work in-house versus having to outsource it. So I'd just like to acknowledge him for that work. Um, moving on to their administrator's reports, a couple of updates. Um, the open space project work continues. However, you're gonna notice over the next couple of weeks, that work is gonna begin to slow as they move into their, their winter schedule. I, I spoke to Director Heinbro from Public Works. He's had conversations with. The contractor in the next week or two, they plan to, uh, cease the bypass pumping of the creek. So we'll start to see water flow through that. That, uh, creek bed naturally is that, uh, bed, bed armoring has been completed. Um, relative to the, what we're gonna call that space, uh, or that park. Staff is currently working on a concept plan that we plan to come to the board in the near future regarding a community park naming contest. And an effort to help us finalize the contest design, just something that I would ask the board to give thought to. No answers are needed tonight, but we're gonna seek some input from, from you on who you would like to see eligible to submit names. And then later participate in the votes of the shortlist. Um, just whether or not you want to differentiate between six triple zero two zip code residents. Or if you'd like to see the contest limited to village residents only, actually business owners or things of that nature. So if you could just start giving some thought to that, that would help us as we, as we finalize the design of that contest. Uh, staff is, uh, diligent working on the budget. We're making good progress. We hope to have our first draft finalized. Um, internally by the end of the third week of January. We're, we're hoping to set select a date for a special meeting. Where we'll be able to have an in-depth, in-depth presentation to the board of that draft budget. That's gonna allow us an opportunity to present those budgets to you at the director level. And then allow board the opportunity for feedback and to help guide some of the revisions to the draft budget. As we start to find a, produce the final draft. Staff has started exploring the potential opportunity to engage with an owner's rep as we try to. Keep our other projects on track and not lose ground. Um, at the request of the mayor, we again work on creating a, uh, request for qualifications on that. Uh, there seems that there may be an opportunity for an outside third party to help, help us start recognizing some potential cost savings. And closing that gap between what these projects are currently looking like they may cost and what are available funds to produce them may be. So we'll keep you posted on that. A few follow-ups for the board, uh, based on some requests that I've received and inquiries. Um, we are currently working with legal on the development of an ordinance to enforce the prohibition of non-electric vehicle parking and designated EV parking spaces. As trustee Mason pointed out last, um, at the last meeting, there is a state statute in place. However, we believe it would be best addressed at the administrative hearing office, officer level. Um, internally rather than bogging down the courts with the, with the parking matter. So that will be coming to the board in the near future. Um, we have received an inquiry relative to handicap parking signage throughout the village. Uh, some of our signs not reflecting, uh, the actual fine structure as it was changed a few years ago. Communications with Public Works, the village signage has been changed and updated to reflect current fine structure. Uh, we're developing a plan internally on how to identify and communicate to private property owners. The need for them to update that signage, um, but with the, you know, having so many private lots, apartment buildings, uh, things of that nature. It's quite an undertaking. So it's gonna take a little bit of a time, but we want you to know we are working on it. Relative to the request regarding the downtown I dot crossing on Main Street and the signalization of flashing lights. A Sherry from Public Works has been in contact with I dot regarding what the requirements may be. Uh, they do have a set of standards in place that we would have to abide by. I just want to let the board know that based on the specs that were provided by I dot, if the boards chooses to endeavor and identify that as a priority, the cost just for the equipment itself. It's gonna be a roughly $10,000. Um, that does not include the cost of additional materials such as the mounting posts. Electrical supplies or any labor costs or engineering costs associated with the installation of that equipment. So again, that would be something that we would potentially seek direction from the board as we work towards preparing our budget. Um, let us know if you think that's, it's a, a, a project that you would like to see identified as a priority. A letter was sent to the property owner along the south side of 173 East of Brim Road, addressing some of the current code violations of concern. Uh, with the demand that they bring those, uh, violations into compliance. So that is on our radar and we do continue to work towards. Resolution to that problem. And I also want to let the board know that in the coming weeks. Public Works is gonna begin work on the addition of a security door. Uh, up in the front lobby to kind of segregate the front entrance from staff, um, just to allow some additional security. Between staff and our, and the public during the day should something arise. Unless anyone has any questions, that will conclude my report for this evening.
Questions? For the chief.
I do.
Administrator, uh, trustee Pierce?
Uh, first of all, Groot. Uh, can we find out how, when their, their contract expires and what, what they cover?
I did look at, I asked Lori for contracts and, um. Uh, to my demise, it was extended through 2027 if I remember correctly. So I did pull that contract, Scott. Um. But yeah, I didn't really. I looked at the leaf portion, but I didn't really get into any further than checking the date of the contract.
Okay, um, I'd, I'd like us to review that contract. I. Their services declined and they have to do a level of service. I mean, I had a neighbor who had a baby gate in the sofa outside. I mean, a ba- baby gate and a sofa. The truck pulls up, takes the baby gate, leaves the sofa. Contract says they take one large item. They didn't take one large item. They took the smallest thing they could take. Another truck drives down the road, drops crap off of it and then gets mad at me that I won't put it in my garbage can. And I made them come back and get their crap. You know, the, when it came to the leaves, there's still people with leaves and their leaves are out in time. But there's still people with leaves and oakwood gnolls on the side of the road. I don't know if they're fulfilling their part of the contract and I think we need to review it. And if, if they're not, find some way to enforce them to, to, to provide the service people are paying for. That's, that's my opinion on Groot. Um, the, the other issue, we're, we're gonna have a naming contest for the park. I think we also need to have a flag contest for the village of Antioch. The current flag has a bicentennial soldier on it or something, a revolutionary war soldier. I would picture something like, uh, uh, the sawmill on it or, or kids playing in the new, the new downtown area. Something that's, that's modern and relevant. I see the Antioch flag. I'm like, oh. And I'm probably making somebody mad from the 50s or 70s or whatever. But I'm like, it's time for something new in the village flag. Let's make ourselves relevant.
All right, thank you. Um, any other questions, comments for chief administrator? All right, thank you. Um, village clerk, any report?
Uh, just that, um, acting administrator, I would mention a special meeting to discuss the budget. Um, we did reach out to the library to see when they're available, um, in February for that meeting. So I'll be sending an email out to board to check their availability. Looks like Friday, um, from two to four in February, but I'll send out dates for all of you to confirm when you're available.
Um, all right, how about, uh, community developments?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I did, did provide a to village board an update regarding some of the properties. We're actually seeing a real development, pending development in marketplace. There's potentially a three layers of intent. Um, plus a hard development. We're working out for commercial development for the marketplace property. Um, so we're actually excited about that. There's real, real interest with commercial development there and we're working with, uh, development averages. On finding commercial end users and they're getting really good feedback on that project. We also have a meeting tomorrow, uh, between HR Green, Manhard and staff. Um, to discuss Brown Road and, uh, we did get feedback, the second revised letter. From the Illinois Department of Transportation as it relates to, um, Brown Road and the modifications or improvements for 173. Uh, which will be concurrent with, uh, uh, overall improvements for the marketplace and Kia, the Kia dealership. So again, our goal is to see the Kia dealership and, uh, marketplace property, um, potentially moving, um. Um, improvements starting either late spring or early summer this year. There is also a proposal for a new commercial development by Hubbard Development and on Route 59 just south of the Ace Hardware. We've been working with their architect, talked to the developer last week about that, I'm sorry, this week. Uh, with Lennar Homes, as you know, we just approved phase four, uh, but we are working with Lennar Homes. On continued discussions on their product. Um, so those discussions are ongoing to make sure that those standards are consistent with the club lands. Uh, guidelines and our expectations. Uh, and with moreover, um, with regards to this site itself, as what we well know, our hope is to be into a new village trial. Uh, staff has been working, um, potentially, we'd like to start some discussions with the board. Uh, on some visioning of what the site, what's appropriate for the site, what type, what is the general consensus of the village board of the type of development that would be appropriate? Uh, for this redevelopment of this particular site. Or if it's the board's, uh, decision or support to back. Redevelop this site. And finally, I just wanted to, uh, inform the board that, uh, there was, uh, soda, soda farm over on. North Avenue just east of Deep Lake Road did go for a planning commission. Um, and that will be coming before the village board, uh, potentially in the first meeting in February. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, um, finance, Director Torres.
Thank you, Mayor. Not so much. Um, acting village administrator, I already went through the budget, but I do wanna add that as elected board members, you do have a budget. If there's any items that you're interested to add in the budget or look what we have currently, just let me know. Also, I got an email from the state. As you know, you receive 1.9 million dollars in upper funds. So by the end of this year, I have to have it obligated. Um, it looks great because the park hopefully will be done this year and I could oblige those funds and pay those out and do the documents for the state. Um, and that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Any trustee reports? Justie Bluthart?
It's the first time asking for this. I don't know exactly if I'm doing this properly or not, but, um, I'd like to have added to the agenda. At, at a meeting, at least in the next month or so, since budgeting is going on. I'd really like to look at the funds that we're gonna be receiving and the revenues from the dispensary. And look at whether the board would, uh, agree to, uh, earmark some of those funds for parks and police. So I'm asking for a discussion of the board to see if there's any willingness to do that. So I guess a cow. No, there's no action to be taken at this time, but with budgeting kicking in, I'd like to. At least get, uh, uh, staff to get whatever information they can regarding, uh, current. Uh, taxes coming in from that if we can. I know that it's been tough to get so far because they just opened recently. Uh, but then look at projecting what we envision, getting it in dispensary funds and then. Looking to see if the board would be willing to consider earmarking some of those funds for. Um, a combination of new and rehab park projects, um, and then police funds.
Um. In addition, let's, um. Some future meeting, add the, uh, park co-op discussion again to the, we need the whole meeting for the board to discuss. That might go, that might go hand in hand with some of that discussion for budgeting as well. Um, all right, any other trustee reports?
Just one, just for comments. My understanding is we're, we're losing a great guy over there. I don't want you. So I just wanted to point that out. So you're gonna be missed. So I hope, I hope you have an exit interview so we know, so everybody knows why, so we don't lose great talent like you. So if it's because of something that, uh. Take them out. At least you feel better.
And, um. Jim has agreed to stick around at least till like the early part of February so he can figure out a transition plan on that. All right? Any other trustee reports, comments? All right, any requests for executive session? Otherwise I entertain a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Motion trustee McNeil?
Second.
Second trustee Peterson, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Meeting is adjourned at 9:28.